So I've opened up the chat box. So for anybody joining us online, we are having some technical difficulties here in the room. We can see that you've joined us. Please stay on mute so that we don't have any sort of background or interruption. So if you could stay muted, that would be helpful. I've opened the chat box so that we can try to communicate. We may be able to hear you or relay the information here in the town hall third floor. I'm not monitoring the chat box constantly as we're running the meeting, so feel free to put a note in there and I will do my best to keep peeking at the screen. Thank you. I apologize for any inconvenience. Okay, it is 6:10. Jeff Sullard, Town Accountant. If you could join us at the table, that would be great. I apologize to everybody for the delay in our agenda this evening.
Congratulations, Jeff, by the way.
Thank you. So this evening, we have Town Accountant Jeff Sullard with us. Brendan and I attend the Manchester Essex Regional School Collaboration Meeting, which is a chair meeting of sorts where we get together and we discuss just some of the paths forward and topics that gives us the ability to bring them back to our boards and have a discussion before we get to the actual meeting so that we kind of know what we're tipping our toe into the water. So this evening's appointment is to meet with our Town Accountant regarding the town's capacity to fund the fiscal year 2025 Manchester Essex School District budget.
Okay, so I had given you guys a couple of pieces of paper to sort of walk through what we might talk about tonight, what I thought would make sense as part of this discussion. So as you recall, we looked at doing an override this year for both the Technical School and the local Manchester Essex School. The tech override had passed. The override for the local school district did not. So we do have a $56,000 override that was added to the tax base for FY24. So the first sheet I gave you folks just kind of walks you through what our levy limit is for the last couple of years. And so you can see for FY23, we had a levy limit of just over $14 million exclusive of things that are outside the levy limit like the excluded debt for the fire station, the school projects, et cetera. For FY24, you'll see that number on this spreadsheet I gave you goes up to about $14,529, which entails using, you know, $350,000, which was our prop two and a half increase for FY24. And then there was also, you'll see on this chart, $100,000 for new growth, which is something that gets built in every year once the assessors do their work and get us to the point where we certify a tax rate. So based on that, we're looking at having a levy limit in FY25, starting at $14,529, and then adding another $363,000 to our budget next year. And just to kind of put some scope around that, if the town side of the budget goes up about 2%, we need $135,000 or so. And by my calculations, if Manchester Essex goes up 2.5% with the impact of apportionment, assuming that students will be the same for this fiscal year as they were for the prior fiscal year last October, a 2.5% increase at Manchester Essex would translate to a 3.94% increase for Essex. So we would need approximately $367,000 just to fund a 2.5% increase at the school, which, you know, as you can see, eats up the entire prop two and a half without even accounting for, you know, any growth on the town side as well. We did go right up to the levy limit this year. We used all of our excess capacity as we knew it in April. What we didn't build in was $100,000 of new growth. So potentially, that's another $100,000 that's available to us. We could, you know, under the levy limit. You know, so if you add that together, we have about $463,000 potentially available. And we have probably $515,000 between the tech, the town, and Manchester Essex at a 2.5% increase. So when folks talk about the what can we afford without an override, essentially a 2.5% increase at the school, which translates to a much bigger number for Essex, is going to put you over the levy limit. We have some other things that we may be able to address in November, December, when we set our tax rate. Maybe we can make some adjustments to revenue estimates and things like that that could pick us up another 40 or 50 or, you know, even $100,000. But we're still going to be right up against it, even at a 2.5% increase at Manchester Essex, assuming that the town only goes up 2%, which is what the town did last year. And we have, much like the school, big-ticket items. If our health insurance suddenly comes in at 7% or 8% instead of, you know, 3% or 4%, that blows a hole in our budget as well. We've been fortunate to date, but, you know, at some point, we may have one of those as well. So, you know, that just kind of lays out, you know, where we are heading into budget season. We have much better information come November, December, when we set the tax rate. But, you know, when I hear that 2.5% number thrown out as the target with the impact of apportionment, it is sort of the realistic target to start with, knowing that anything above that is going to, you know, entail potentially an override.
So Jeff, my question for you is when you say 2.5, are you at 2.5? When we're trying to give feedback to the school, are we saying to them that we're at 2.5 then apportionment, or are we at 2.5 once they've calculated apportionment?
No, that would be if they were to, if they were at 2.5, that would equate to about 3.94 for us. And that would put us right around, you know, where we would be looking at an override potentially.
We're still at an override, okay.
Yeah, and if the...
And that's with nothing changing at the town side?
Yeah, if you don't have any, you know, issues that come up, you know, that sort of add to the budget, which, you know, HVAC, generators, elevators, we seem to have new things creeping up more and more. So yeah, that, you know, anything that comes up on the town side could cut it, you know, if the town goes to 2.5%, that would cut into what we could afford under, afford with the school.
Yeah, so virtually, that's unrealistic to assume that there will be no change in the town side.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, the town, historically, on the town side, we've been pretty good at staying in the 2% range. But, you know, at the same time, you see the impacts of that. I mean, the way we operate makes it difficult to, you know, keep part-time clerks in the planning board or things like that. And I think more and more, we're seeing the impact of that, you know, quite honestly, as people try to, you know, we don't have a conservation agent right now because it's difficult to find one and fund it and, you know, for the limited time we have. So at some point, you know, for the town of Essex to operate effectively, you may have to say, we need to spend an extra few thousand dollars on a Concom agent or a planning board clerk. And that's not a lot of money, but across the spectrum, you know, it does add up, you know, on the town side.
Brendan, you were going to say something?
I was just going to say, in order for the town to come in at 2.5% after apportionment, you would be talking about a district increase, overall increase of much, much lower, like in the ones?
Yeah, I mean, just to get to this year's override, which got us, yeah, and not even to, I mean, I think we get a little bit more than just the 2.5% this year. You know, but Manchester came in at, you know, under 1%. Once we got down to the, you know, and that was to get down to like, you know, 3.5%, 4%. So yeah, I mean, 2.5% at the apportionment level is not an attainable goal either. I mean, the school could not operate and get a, under apportionment, get a budget to Essex at 2.5%.
Thank you. Peter, Alva, do you have any further questions? No?
No, I think the purpose was generally for everyone to understand because tomorrow, we're going to go back and talk with the collaboration group again. And I guess the only question I have for the board is, do you have at this early time any opinion as to, you know, where you want to go with this?
I think for me, hearing what Jeff just had to say, we're a little premature. I mean, I think it's going to be difficult to say in September that we should have a hard and fast number when we haven't set the tax rate or we don't know what our free cash is. So Jeff, how do you feel about that? I mean, do you think that we should talk about?
I mean, I don't think at this point, talking about anything over and above 2.5% at the district level makes a lot of sense because there's too many unknowns for us on settling the tax rate, looking at free cash, you know, which right now, I was probably a little more pessimistic about free cash a few weeks ago. I'm feeling a little bit better. But there's actually another spreadsheet in your packet I'd like to take a quick look at because I think it ties into all this. But you'll see there's a piece towards the end which kind of walks through our reserve funds and our stabilization funds and things like that. You know, the only other way to fund, you know, growth of the budget and growth of the school budget, you know, other than using taxation, is to look at the use of, you know, the use of like free cash has been talked about at times. But much like the school, you know, that is not something we can, you know, it's not prudent for us to, you know, dip into those to manage that operating budget because they have, you know, a limited life. We don't know how long, you know, we're going to have those kind of funds around. And so I think this chart I put in at the end is somewhat helpful because, you know, one of the things that came up as a discussion, not only in Essex, but also in Manchester, was there was a lot of discussion about reserves and how much each town was sitting on for cash. And, you know, at some point, someone looked at the, you know, the pink Finance Committee booklet that was handed out at town meeting and said, you know, geez, the town of Essex is, you know, nearly $11 million in reserves, you know, they should, you know, sort of tap into those. And so this sheet here just kind of walks you through, you know, the reality of those funds. So, you know, there's, you know, say $10.8 million, you know, but $5.5 million is legally restricted, you know, whether it's the sale of real estate fund or the OPEP trust fund or whatever. You know, another $2 million is in the enterprise, you know, funds, which is non-general fund. You know, then we have specific set-aside funds, the various stabilization funds for recreation and vehicles and things like that. You know, that's another 1.1, 1.2 million. So out of that $10.8 million, you know, we have basically $2.2 million that's what I, you know, would call available to us in the form of either free cash or stabilization, like general stabilization. So, you know, knowing that the available 1.1, 1.2 million of free cash we have left that was certified for June 30, 2022, that money is sort of earmarked for the fire trucks that we need. And then when we get free cash recertified, say we get back up over $2 million, you're still looking at having a million dollars towards the fire truck and then having a million or a million two or something of that nature to apply to all of our other, you know, needs. So if we start throwing 200, 300, 400,000 at the school budget, that's going to, you know, diminish those funds quickly. And you don't necessarily know that those funds are going to continue at that same level moving forward. So, you know, I just, I've heard some folks say like, that's the simple solution. And maybe it's part of a solution, but, you know, I just think we need to be careful as we talk about that. You know, the other part of this is if you look towards the bottom, that last column, the available, you know, available for general fund that shows the 2.2 million, those two things have a target on them. You know, per a policy that you, the Board of Selectmen signed off on a few years ago, we have a financial reserves policy that says we would have free cash that's essentially equal to 5% of our general fund operating budget, and we will have a general stabilization fund that's also equal to 5% of our general fund operating budget. Down below, you can see that right now, free cash is sitting at a little over 6%. General stabilization is a little over 5.5%. You know, so, you know, general stabilization, for example, you know, a few more years of budget growth, and we'll be looking at having to fund that to get it back up over the 5%, you know, kind of threshold there. So, you know, I think we need, as we have these discussions about the budget and the schools and et cetera, we need to be thinking about this, you know, holistically. You know, so I just wanted to put that in folks' minds, but also make, you know, make it clear that for folks that think we have, you know, 10 million sitting around that's available for anything, you know, that's clearly not the case. Most of that money is earmarked either, you know, by us or legally, you know, we're limited in what we can use it for. And so, you know, knowing that we've got the two fire trucks coming up in the very near term, you know, I think that's where our focus has to be. And I would say, if you look at that set aside for specific purposes, you know, in all likelihood, we should probably slow down on funding those, you know, to address keeping the general stabilization fund where it needs to be. And then also, you know, focusing our attention on the fire trucks because unlike a few years ago, when interest was, you know, quite cheap and, you know, we did the fire station at, you know, under 2.2%, you know, if we have to take debt out on the fire trucks, you know, they're not insignificant purchases, they're, you know, going to be close to $2 million in total, you know, if you're suddenly looking at 6% interest on those, that's money that's coming out of the budget for other things. So we'd be far better to, you know, use that free cash on those purchases moving forward. So, you know, I just think I wanted that all to be part of the overall discussion about how we're approaching the other parts of the budget because that's concerning for us moving forward. We want to make sure we're addressing those trucks and, you know, we know we'll have other capital needs as well.
And while Jeff's still here, I mean, this, the summary of the last school budget collaboration group meeting is separately on the agenda, but just in case Jeff has anything to say about it, there's a statement that reflects what was discussed, says, while there is no official position from the Essex Board of Selectmen at this time, the group discussed the assertion that anything beyond a 2.5% increase to Essex, meaning the overall increase would be much lower, right, to get Essex to 2.5?
And that's what they're talking about is after apportionment, 2.5?
Well, no, this is just talking about what if they had to get down to where it came to 2.5 to Essex, okay? It says, that's unaffordable for the town without an override. This is what the group discussed. It was posited that options for Essex to fund their portion of the MERSD FY25 operating budget will be an override, district cuts to bring the bill down, or change to the apportionment formula. In order to get down to 2.5% for Essex, there's like a $1.3 million reduction that would have to take place within the district. So I guess, in case you had any questions for Jeff, I mean, you can talk about this later as well, but, you know, does the board agree, at least right now, with what we know right now, that Essex cannot afford the, even if it came 2.5 to Essex, can't really afford anything above that without the override cuts or a change to the formula? Those really are the three things that, yeah.
I would like that's the case.
That's pretty obvious.
Yeah, and Jeff, do you agree?
I mean, 2.5% to Essex is certainly affordable. I mean, that will get us well under, but yeah, 2.5 at the school level and then 3.9 for us is, yeah, not, will not work. Or anything above that won't work with an override.
Right, because this statement was talking about in order to get 2.5 to Essex, it would have to be quite a...
Significant.
Significant cut, yeah. But anything over that, so it says, anything beyond a 2.5% increase to Essex is unaffordable without one of those three things.
I don't know if I'm hearing it wrong because I'm hearing anything over 2.5 to Essex is not affordable.
Anything above that, right?
Meaning with apportionment?
The town can afford, if apportionment, if the overall increase within the district budget was in the ones or something.
Yeah.
And it delivered 2.5 to Essex, that's affordable. But anything beyond that, given the fact that we're at our limit with excess levy capacity, you would have to find that money somewhere else, correct? I mean, that's what the group was talking about before we had this session tonight.
Gotcha.
So they're not considering 1.3 million as a district cut that's significant?
No, they are.
Oh, they certainly are.
They're just trying to give...
Two and a half. And even with the...
In order to get Essex to that, yeah.
Yeah, you still have to have a major cut.
Yes, correct.
Right, if you go in.
Right. But Essex could afford that if they did it. No one is saying that that's the solution, but that's the mechanics of it.
Okay.
And so I just wanted to bring that up while Jeff was here, and then if there's further discussion later, go from there.
Does anyone have questions for Jeff? Nope. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, it is 6:29. We did have a 6:20 appointment with Katie Montgomery for a discussion regarding approval of the Cultural District Investment Grant Application by the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum. So Katie, if you want to join us at the table, so every year, the Essex Cultural Council has grants that they send out to the town, and the museum generally applies for these grants to have different types of cultural events. And the selectmen are the ones that have to sign off on the grant. So Katie puts together a program of events, or one event, multiple events, whatever it may be, brings it to the selectmen, and then we vote on her moving forward or make comments, questions, concerns. So Katie, the floor is yours.
Okay. So this is just a request for approval to use the full $15,000 for one event in the spring or early summer of 2024, just an Essex River Cultural District Arts and Culture Festival. And I passed around a preliminary budget, the committee met on the 7th, and we just, you know, went over the numbers and a rough idea. And this is all we'd like to present.
And this is the breakdown here you just gave us?
Yep. So the breakdown is really basic with the most of the money going towards stipends to incentivize the businesses and artists to participate. So that way, it's really a festival that is by the people, for the people, so they can make it whatever they want. And that gives them some funding to, you know, run a workshop or an activity or whatever they feel like is representative of their particular slice of culture in Essex.
And this is at the Shipbuilding Museum?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
So we would, we would host at our site. That's not to preclude anybody from doing anything in their storefronts if they had wanted to during that time. This is offering our site up for use.
So I have two questions. Number one, is this going to be a one-day event?
Yes. But we haven't picked a day.
No, I see that, you know, I mean, I don't see a date, and I see that it's going to be before June 31 of 2024 to match what the grant would offer. My other question is, just because it doesn't outline, it's an arts and culture festival, but I guess, not to say what is the definition, but how is, it's the whole, one man's trash is another man's treasure, right? So how can we be sure as the Board of Selectmen that what we're presenting as the event is acceptable? Will that be another proposal that you bring before us and say it's going to be X, Y, or Z? Or...
I don't think I understand the question. Like, are you saying, like, are, do you want to have yes or no as to what culture is in Essex? Because I, like, I feel like I can't make that decision either, right? It's culture is by definition what culture is. So that could be artists, that could be food, but we would be applying for the necessary permits.
Sure. I guess, in my mind, what I'm thinking is I want to make sure that nothing that we do is offensive to any one particular group or that we're inclusive and we take everyone's feelings into consideration. So I want to make sure that whatever the event is, wide variety of cultural things, that we're keeping that in mind, I guess.
Yeah, so the application will be open to everyone. Anybody who wants to be a part of it is welcome to be a part of it. So that does make it a little less predictable as exactly what it's going to be, but I can't really foresee anything being particularly offensive.
Okay.
Yeah. So you haven't really decided what it will be specifically?
Well, it's a, it's a representation of arts and culture. So like, if you wanted to come and say, you know, the habitat of the Essex River is a big part of our culture, you could do a booth that's environmental. And if you wanted to say that, you know, Essex landscapes are really important, you could do a booth of paintings. And so it's going to be very varied, but it's representation of culture in Essex, which is, you know, it's broad.
Yeah. How will you decide which ones you will accept? First come, first served, or?
Yeah, so I think we'll just make a generalized application because when you're adding money into it, people might just apply to apply.
Yeah.
And so we'll do a generalized application and it'll just be like, based on the Essex River Cultural District Committee will decide.
Valuate which are most representative, which ones are most thorough, which ones are whatever.
Yeah, and we're, you know, we're actually hoping for participation, you know? We don't know if people are going to jump on this or if they're going to poo-poo it. And so we want fair representations. We want to leave the door wide open.
So you're not going to limit yourself? You're not going to say, we're only going to choose five of the 25 applications? You're going to say, well, if there's 25 and they all fit the criteria, we're going to welcome them all?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not limiting.
Yeah, we're really trying to leave this very open and make it a community event for everyone to participate in.
And the applications will be read and voted upon from the Cultural Council or the board members?
Yes, yeah, this committee.
The committee, okay.
And all you have to do is ask for the money from MCC and they'll give it to you?
Yeah, so I just need you to approve and Brendan to like click the button, I think is all we need to do.
So you have access to the portal, but not as a submitter? And if the board votes tonight to submit this thing when it's ready, which by the way, what is your deadline? Do you know?
The 27th of September.
Of September. Then I, as the administrator of the system, can do that.
When do you have to have your decisions made on who will be added or not? Right up to the day before or whatever, sometime just before?
So if this is accepted, then we will put more parameters around the event itself. MCC is not requiring any formal application. We could use this for like any amount of different projects. We just felt that this one was the most inclusive and representative of the cultural district in Essex.
And they're always good about making sure they get applications into us 30 days before events because they know that there's a whole hearing process if denied. So they're good about their applications.
Definitely.
Okay. Alva, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just around, just around those parameters. I think that once you have an idea of what you're going to give, because to me, it kind of seems vague and anybody, like you said, anybody could apply for it, just to see if they could apply. I'd like to see, that's not going to stop me from voting, but I'd like to see what? You know, like, how do you go, like, can I say, I've got a penny collection, I think, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you could. Because like, if that, if you feel like that is part of Essex, and I actually know some people collect coins and they think it's really cool and might want to share that. And if, and if that's like something to you and part of the fabric of the community, I don't think that I would deny someone based on thinking that their hobby was like less interesting than someone else's hobby. So I think it's going to be, it's really, really subjective to say what's culture and what's not culture, which is a really kind of fun and healthy conversation to have as a community. And I think that this is a cool venue to do that rather than, like, some people would be like, oh, well, just art. And I don't want to do just art because, like, we're the Shipbuilding Museum, we're not just art. You could argue that shipbuilding is art, but then history is a huge part of your culture. So there's, you know, you could slice this up so many different ways that I'm trying not to limit it and make it exclusive in any way.
The board will gauge, and the board has a good handle on this sort of stuff. So it's sort of in their hands as to what goes in and what doesn't, so.
Yeah, and they're representative of a good slice of Essex culture. There's, there's some artists and there's some business owners and there's people that live in, they all have to live in and/or work in Essex to be part of that committee.
And I also would just comment that they are open meetings, they are posted. So we are, I have myself attended, and we can certainly hear the application process and what the criteria is for voting.
Yeah, and I completely invite anybody to join in and get involved because this, I'm hoping that this gets a lot of community traction and we get a lot of people who want to be a part of it. And that's part of leaving it so open, is I don't want anybody feeling excluded or like it's not for them, like this is what's culture in Essex. And that's, maybe it'll be a really fun question to answer.
Fun to see.
Yeah.
I guess for me, and I think I'm kind of saying what Al was saying, I think we're on the same page, is you guys have a bunch of licenses before us this evening for all sorts of great events. You have the, the Apple event and the Spooky event and the Santa by boat. So you guys are very creative when it comes to planning events, and you do it well. So this, I guess, isn't specific for me. And I know that basically you're going for that, nonspecific, right? So, but I think it feels like we're approving something that we don't know really what we're approving. And that's where I struggle, is I'm very black and white. And that's where I struggle, is I'm very black and white with what I approve, so that I can say, Katie, like, next year, I could say to you, well, you didn't do what we said we approved. So this just leaves it a little open-ended. Again, like Alva, I'm not going to vote against this, I'm voting for it. I just think having things that are more definitive for me is my kind of comfort zone.
I, I think maybe if you look at it more like, this is approval for us to plan an event, right? So like, this is approval to, to give us this budget with these rough parameters, and we're going to use that to plan the event. And then there will be some sort of cutoff before the event, where we have to say, okay, now the plan's done, and we have to actually put in for checks from Town Hall. So like, you do get the final say, and we will be putting in the permits and all of that. Well, there's, there's that backstop. It's not like you're just giving us $15,000 to run with, or in, you know, blanket approval. This is approval for us to move forward.
Sure.
Because we can't put things in stone if then I, if I made all these people do all that work, and then you guys said no, that would be awful.
Right, absolutely. Any other more, any other questions? No? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the moving forward of the Cultural District Investment Grant Application by the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 6:41, and we have the Council on Aging with us. I see Chair Kay Joseph, and Anne Buckley, and Kristen Crockett. If you all want to join us, I can pull up more chairs. If you want to go to the microphone, there you can. If you want to join us, you can, whichever is the easiest for you.
You'll sit here.
Okay. So we have Anne Buckley and Kristen Crockett from the Council on Aging to discuss the proposed funding for an in-depth survey on the demographics of the senior citizenry and proposed job description changes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. So I'll let Anne talk about the request for the demographic study, and then I will talk about the request to look at the staffing and personnel over at the Senior Center.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks again for having us and for having looked at our proposal that we submitted last month. And the request is to collaborate with University of Massachusetts Department of Gerontology. They have a wonderful study program that they make available to communities at large, and it is, it is the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging specifically. They have done a number of studies with other communities in our area, including Hamilton, Wenham. They've also worked with Topsfield, Beverly, and I think that she said Ipswich, Caitlin Coyle, I don't remember if she said Ipswich specifically, but the other communities, yes. And you were involved with the initial proposal for Hamilton, is that correct? So we have a lot of, of information, and it is publicly available on their website for people to go in and take a look at. They have trademarked something wonderful called the Elder Index, which is a, is a deep dive into the ability to understand the true cost of secure living expenses for elders, and what does it actually take to live safely and securely. It's a very basic budget, it's based on a very basic budget, which accounts for housing, transportation, food, shelter. It takes into account nothing for vacations, or eating out, or any other, this is just for a very basic budget, and what does it cost to live in areas of the country. And here in New England, we are obviously, just like a lot of other coastal areas, we are above what is the national average. And here in, in Essex County, we are at 18% above the, the national average. And our belief is, having taken a cursory look at, at some numbers, we expect that we would see that that is even higher here in the town of Essex, the costs are here. A lot of that has to do with housing. But they, they actually have an ability for, it's an index, you can go right on the website and take a look and plug in, and it just really allows you to deep dive just as far as the county level on that. But it does allow you to overlay what does it cost for two people living in a household who have, own their own home with no mortgage, those who own their, a couple that owns their home with a mortgage, what does a single person have for expenses, and also what does it cost to be a renter, whether you're single or with a two-person household. It also takes into consideration, this is somebody living with good health, somebody who's in poor health, or somebody who's in excellent health. So there are different ways that they can kind of skew that language. So this Elder Index allows communities and municipalities to have a, a planning tool to, to really get into an understanding for budgeting purposes across a number of the boards and a number of departments within a town or municipality for, for strategic planning, as well as for immediate budgeting, as, as well as taking a look more, more deeply. So that is what we are hoping to be able to, to do for here in Essex. There has been some work already done with, in collaboration with senior care. They have done, this report that they have done for the senior care, which included Essex, was done pre-pandemic. So those numbers are aggregate, and they were also really looking at, at dementia-related programming, but some of the basic underlying work has already been done. So what we're looking for, actually, is, is to be able to bring a very specific look at what is the demographic here in the town. It is rather interesting, because we are already with, with 3,800 roughly residents in town, we are already over 32% over 60, and that is projected to be close to 40% by 2030, 2035. We will be ready, about at 40% of our town population. What is interesting is, we take a look at that, is that same cohort has been in place for a very long time, and you can see the town, if you take a look at the demographics, it's been aging over time, the same group of people. And we expect that that group that is a, the leading edge, the, the final trailing edge of our, of our baby boomers, who will be turning 60 in 2024, or 65 in 2024, they, they will be here looking to age in place in town. And based on expectancies, we expect that we will see an entire generation age in place for 20 years, 20 to 25 years. So what we could potentially be looking at are two generations of seniors. There are the seniors that are the 60 to 70-year-olds, and then we have the, the seniors who, aging at the fastest rate, are the over 80s. So you could, we could potentially be looking at two generations of seniors in a large cohort here in town. 75% of them are homeowners. So as we take a look at what are the implications financially for us, for revenue, given that the majority of our revenue comes from, from real estate taxes, we look at all of the way that we've got the budget apportioned right now, what are the long-term implications? What are the implications for what we will need for services in town? For example, just one, is are we appropriately staffed for EMS, for the number, will we see more ambulance runs, will we, on a regular basis, as people age in place? We don't know. But there are models that allow for that to be looked at, and that is part of what they do. So for what we have already in place, it's good information, but it is not nearly complete enough for us to be able to come back, either as part of the Strategic Planning Committee for the town, or as for a, a board ourselves, to be able to come and explain where are we in our needs for, where are we in our ability to meet the needs of our, our population just in general. Right now, our business model runs essentially, I'm going to call it on four legs. One is constituency services, which is, refers people to counseling services, whether they be federal, state, local, for families and individuals. The second leg is, is programming that we have in, in support of, of some of the service needs. The, the third one is events, just like the wonderful one we just heard about for the cultural festival. We do event planning as well, but we also have facilities management because of the Senior Center. So there are, there are four legs that we are continually looking at right now, and what do we need in order to hold those four legs up so that the tabletop stays level? That's one thing. But in terms of our outlook and long-term ability to speak really coherently, cogently, to all of our boards, and to be able to be a, a partner in all of those conversations, we, we're looking for your support for us to be able to bring this to the town, a town meeting in November, to ask for $35,000, up to $35,000. It may not cost that much, but it probably would come in at about that, to be able to have a planning tool that would be used by all of our boards and our, our departments across the, across the sector. So that's essentially, in a nutshell, what it is. But happy to entertain questions. Other thing that we would be very happy to do before we jump off this is to, is to have an open forum at the Senior Center, where we could do a really nice presentation with the slides and the deeper level of information that we think would be helpful for people to understand. So open to the public, have a nice forum, invite anybody from the boards who would like to really come in and ask how this could enhance or help any of the other planning departments. Would love to be able to do that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Oh, no, I think Anne.
Anne covered it.
I, I think Anne covered that. I think what I would add, and you have the proposal, is that they would be sending out a survey by email, I mean, by regular mail, by postcard, and it would be accessible online, but then there'd be a number where people who don't have access to email could call. They would do that survey for them, so that we're, you know, certainly not leaving out people who don't have access to the internet. And it would include stakeholder interviews, so we would identify a number of people in town, including a representative from the Select Board as well, to participate in those interviews, including the, one of the chiefs, and some other people that we would collectively determine would be important to have in those interviews.
Great.
So included the schools, and, and actually, school-aged children as part of that as well.
Great, thank you so much.
So this $35,000, this goes to UMass Boston?
Yes.
The whole thing?
Yes.
Are there any grants that could help fund a portion of it? Did any of the other communities that do this look into grants, or does UMass know of any grants that they could get, or you could get for that to help offset some of the costs?
I'm not aware of any at this time. I know when we did it as part of the Kate Anne Collaborative, we did it under the, and Brendan, I forget, it was the Community Compact Program?
Right. Which, which was a couple of years back now, right? So we may be eligible for funding under the Community Compact. Again, I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, Ruth. So there's some chunk of the 60-plus group that is not really income-challenged. Are you going to break out that, so you're, you're primarily dealing with two groups? You know, the groups that you probably don't see that much, because they're, you know, they don't come to the Senior Center, or whatever, they, they have things in line now, but they're going to have some different needs at some point coming up. And then you have the income-challenged people that need special attention as well. So will it break down that way, so that they're the two different groups?
So I mean, what I'm going to say, and I have up here too, which, which I can give you guys a copy of as well, it is from 2018, so some of these numbers are older. The Tufts Community Health Foundation had done a community study where we look at a lot of that. The, the seniors living in poverty, I believe, is around 10 to 12% in Essex, which is a little bit, you know, I feel like it's pretty high. We certainly have people whose incomes are much higher. Because of the nature of what we do at the Senior Center, we deal with people of all income levels. So I know that I had, just today, I had people on both ends of that, that spectrum, because we deal with everybody on Medicare.
Right.
I, we get everybody that comes in. So if somebody has, and, you know, a, I don't want to say penalty, because that's not the right word, but essentially, if they have a penalty because they have a higher income on Medicare, they're going to come in, and we're going to help them problem-solve that. If they're a higher income, and they have a spouse with chronic health issues, or with dementia, they're going to come in, and we're going to problem-solve that. And I did pull out some numbers, kind of in support of changing some of the staffing over there. In fiscal year 17, we served 118 people. In fiscal year '23, we served 453 people, so that's a 300% increase. And then that's looking at the number of people, so that is, that really is representative of people from all ages. And what we also look at, we look at unduplicated, so that is your number of people, and then we look at duplicated people. So that is how many times, or how many contacts we saw people. So in fiscal year 17, which is when we brought in our outreach coordinator, we had 1,768 contacts. The last fiscal year, we had 7,992 contacts. So we've had huge, huge increase in that. We've also, you know, with regard to those social services, we have increased from 26 people, that we did some one-on-one support to, helping with Medicare and whatnot. In the last fiscal year, that was 228 people. And I will say, on that end, it's gotten a lot more complicated. Across the board, across the state, we're seeing that cases are just becoming more complicated, but we're getting a much deeper reach into the community. So people are now coming to us with, you know, mom and dad need to move to assisted living. We really don't know what to do, how to, how to do this. So we are making referrals to a lot of different places, where before it was, who can I call to fix this one situation, and that could be the end of that interaction. Now we're spending a lot more time helping people and building those relationships, which in turn is bringing them in to volunteer, it's bringing them in to participate in events. So we've seen tremendous growth over the last number of years.
Thank you. My other question is, you mentioned several communities that have done this, and I'm assuming that the study is completed in those, Hamilton, Wenham, Topsfield, wherever. What happened in those communities as a result of the, the study that was done?
So I brought them into Hamilton when I was there just as a consultant, and I, they did not make those ones public. And there is a director there now, so I don't have that. In some cases, like what was done here, is we became certified by the World Health Organization as an age-friendly community, and a dementia-friendly community. In other places, they have looked at how to structure their Senior Center and what the staffing needs are. So they really do it unique, uniquely based on what that community is looking for. And I think for Essex, what we really need to look at, looking at, you know, what Jeff was talking about with the budget, you know, the schools and the school budget is a big issue for Essex. But we also have 40% of our population that is going to be over the age of 60, and that is one of the smallest pieces of the budget. And when the school budget increases, and we're talking about these folks that don't have kids in the school, it's just as important for them and their property taxes that we do take care of the schools, but we also need to take care of those seniors and find different ways to make that all work. And I think in terms of budgeting and planning for you, understanding what the needs of all of our age groups are, and all of our demographics, is going to be really important. And for us, when we met with UMass, we did emphasize that, that we don't want this to be just a look at the 60-and-over population, because it is important to understand what are the needs of our youth here, too. How can we meet the needs of all of our citizens in the most effective way, make the best use of our taxpayer dollars, because they are very limited, and we do understand that.
So you're, you're looking to see how you can better serve the population based on the data that comes out of it, and what services you can, you should be providing in the future? Yeah, okay.
And, and I think to position it as a way that the other departments can use this as well. I mean, we don't want it, I certainly don't want it to be something that's just usable for the Senior Center. I think it's something that's useful for the library, if we get a youth commission, or if we don't, you know, but something that could be used and, and built to service all of the departments.
Okay, thank you.
And, and UMass thinks that a community of this size, like, I, my feeling is, is that if we had three communities, you'd have a better idea of the area versus just in Essex. I kind of get the feeling like, then maybe we should be interviewing 40-year-olds, because they're going to be the next generation coming up on 60 quickly. I'm just a little...
They'll be, they'll be involved in the interviews as well.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
So how long is a study of this type good for? Does this give you information that's good for three years, five years, 10 years? What's the projection of this study? So that we are, if we vote to fund it, we know that this is a document that we're going to use for historical, you know, reasons, and to move forward with it, needs of the community long into the future?
Absolutely. We're actually looking, which is what makes our proposal different, maybe from some of the other towns, is we're actually taking a look at this from a generational perspective of what does 20 years look like? What, so we are looking out at 20, maybe even 25 years, but they have the ability
What, so we are looking out at twenty, maybe even twenty-five years, but they have the ability to project that out for us. And so what we are going to see, most likely, and we've already talked to Caitlin about this, and she had highlighted this already, it's almost like watching a group that has already been in place. The group that we're going to be looking at projecting over the next twenty to twenty-five years is the same group of people that have been here for much longer than that timeframe. So we're going to be able to see the impact of a cohort of people sort of moving through their lifespan here in town. Because most of the people involved in this are people who have been in place here in town, have raised families in town, and are now aging in place and caring for aging parents. And we actually are seeing a rise now in, it's multi-generational. We are seeing a rise, as Kristin will talk to, that in grandparents now raising grandchildren. So multi-generational is a very big component of this.
But I'll ask what, like, the duration that they project that it's considered a usable study or how quickly it will become outdated. I can get that information for you.
It would be interesting to, you know, you don't know what's going to happen. I mean, maybe taxes will drive elderly out. Maybe taxes will be low enough that other people will come in, you know, because of the, you know, the proximity to the coast and all that sort of stuff. So it would be nice to have them look at those two sort of things, because, you know, we do know that it's not going to be stagnant, and it's just going to be one group moving through. There'll be people, there may be an influx of people coming in or an influx of people moving out, and that will affect what you should be doing and what you need to do.
Oh, absolutely. So what would be wonderful is that we'll be able to, when we sit down, to really design what would be good information, what would be working information for all of the different interested parties in town, the stakeholders? What would we like to know? And then from there, they will craft the focus groups, they will craft the questionnaire, et cetera, based on what it is that we would like to use as a tool, as an overall strategic planning tool, which is ultimately what this is all about.
So to know me is to know that I'm honest to a fault. It usually doesn't make me a lot of friends. But what I'm, I have several things. So I've been to meetings. You know that I'm a big senior supporter. I love the idea of my seniors aging in place. I mean, it warms my heart. You know that I'm always a huge supporter. So I like, and I love data. I love having the information at our fingertips that can guide us along the way. Now the honest part, that makes me not have a lot of friends. What I'm also hearing is a lot of dollar signs. And I'm sure you realize that that's what's going to go through our minds. I'm thinking about, you know, we mentioned increased medical calls. That doesn't say to me, oh, no, we have fifty more ambulance calls a year. That says to me, now we've hit that tripwire of being a full-time fire department. And it's, because as you know, we operate on a call department basis. It saves us about a million dollars a year. We are talking about other big budgetary issues. It's not just about the fire department. That's one, obviously. We talk about, I mean, it could be police-related. It could end up being a lot more mental health-related issues where we have more policing and not just fire and medical. It could be a full-time council on aging director. It could be two full-time council on aging members. It could be three, because now we're dealing with a lot more insurances. So and I'm not saying that I'm opposed to full-time positions. It's just that with each new position that we entertain, there are benefits, there's a cost associated. So I still like data, and I still support the seniors. I'm just a little concerned about what this means going forward. It just, that's my biggest issue.
Yeah, I mean, but if there are things that are discovered that are needs of the town, then, you know, we need to step up and meet those needs, even if they cost money. But yeah, I agree with you. We need to be comfortable with what comes out of the study to think that it's going to be something that we can use as a blueprint for the next twenty years.
Well, so then it also reverts back, for me, not part of this discussion, but part of a different Board of Select discussion, which is the senior tax. One of the articles we have on Fall Town Meeting is for the senior tax break. And when I'm looking at numbers, that we're going to be forty percent of our seniors are going to be over sixty years old. Think about that. That could be a giant issue with our, you know, tax base.
Yeah, although not really, because it's structured on income and.
But those are big numbers. They're alarming. When you're talking forty percent over sixty.
They are big numbers, yes, for sure.
So those are all my questions. I wouldn't be me if I didn't ask the tough questions that made people raise their eyebrows, so.
That's why we're here.
But that is why we're here. And I thank you so much for the opportunity, because it is actually, in terms of an overarching look at this, it's not something that we've actually done any kind of a true deep dive into. And so in terms of how do we take a look at what are going to be the impacts more widely in town when it comes time to maybe build a new school? Or time to do a big upgrade to any of the infrastructure projects, the Apple Street, you know, any of those kinds of things? How are all of those going to be received by people? And we've got a forty percent cohort that it's, they're not in their prime, and they're not in their prime earning years at this point. So I think that's, that's sort of why I think, to have the data, I'm with you. The data is our best guide, and the better that we have an outline to follow with really good data and ways to access it and read it, I think the better decisions that we'll be able to make collectively and have. We would love to be part of the conversation, just in general. And just, again, would like to invite everybody to be part of what's going on with our conversations, too. We're eager to, we're doing strategic planning internally with the board, as well as hoping to be able to bring something very much of value to the wider town strategic planning.
Perfect. Thank you, Anne. So I guess, did we have any more questions before we move on?
I just had the.
I'm going to get to that, Kristin, but I want to talk about this before, this is a big topic.
So we're looking at voting for thirty-five thousand on this town meeting.
Fall Town Meeting. And the reason for that is this agreement doesn't, they wouldn't start the work until June of twenty-four, if I recall, yeah. So we would vote for fall to get them on the list.
That's a lot of money to vote at a Fall Town Meeting. So, you know, I'm not against it. I'm just against the fact that it's Fall Town Meeting, that that's a lot of money.
Well, hopefully Brendan can find out from the Community Compact thing.
I will.
Yeah. And that could cover all the costs, potentially.
Could.
Yeah.
I guess, so for me, you know, we spend a lot of money on a lot of different things in town. And I don't, generally, the senior center and the council on aging doesn't come before the town looking for money.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I'm not somebody who likes a lot of these. I feel we're a small town, and you could take three other towns and figure out that the seniors are going to be about the same. But I also feel like when somebody says to do research, thirty-five thousand dollars? What do I get tangible at the end? And I just feel that, we should be cautious. I don't know in my heart that that's something that everybody will vote for.
Although the forty percent kind of scares me. I mean, that's, you know, here approaching, it's a big chunk of people in town. You're talking about two thousand, you know, the population as it sits today. So, you know, I think that it's important to get out in front of this before all of a sudden, we've got forty percent of the population and we don't have the services. We don't know, we don't know what to do, you know, and that's my fear. I think of thirty-five thousand dollars, it's big for the town of Essex, but it's small for a study that can give you good direction. And I'm hoping that it is good direction. I mean, that's, that's what I don't know enough about. And that's why I asked about the other communities and what they did with that information and how that benefited, you know, their services that they're providing now. Or at least the direction they're going to try to do that, because it's not something you do overnight. You get the report, and it takes years sometimes to modify what you're doing.
Brendan, in your twenty years of doing this, and I'm sure you've read the scope of services that they're going to provide, do you think that the price tag associated with what we're going to get from this study is worth thirty-five thousand dollars?
I think that when you hire a consultant these days, you're in that range anyway, no matter what the topic.
It's a lighting project or a striping and signage project.
I can say that the council has never had the opportunity to do something in such a calculated and measured way. There's been efforts, you know, of the council members and of the director, but they were more homegrown or things you can nip around the edges, like with some of the work that they can do using the formula grant and such. But nothing that was ever dedicated in this way to determining what your senior needs really are in the town.
I also, and I hear Elvis' concerns, but I guess I feel like it's going to go to town meeting.
Right.
People are going to either vote for it or not vote for it. If it goes to Fall Town Meeting and it's not voted for, we could bring it to annual and see if it's a different pool of people that, you know, have a different feeling.
Or find some other grant, maybe they can find some other grant money or the.
Exactly.
Compact or whatever to help get it through.
I still go back to the council on aging and the senior center in general does not come to the town often or ever, really, for.
This is my first time coming up here with.
Looking for additional funds. So I am in support of moving forward with the study.
I am as well.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the in-depth survey on the demographics of the senior citizenry and citizenry through UMass Boston.
To put it on the.
To put it on Fall Town Meeting, right?
Still moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will check the cabinet. I'm looking at it right now, and there's a lot of age and dementia-friendly stuff, but that's not quite what this is. And we already did have one project that was aimed in a regional basis for that. So, but I will check it again.
I can't imagine that there isn't some grant out there that would, at least, you know, five thousand dollars or something like that that would go towards something.
We'll definitely go back and take a look and see what we can find.
Sure.
Also, to show that, again, that we're interested in being very serious partners, we can always ask the friends of the council to also put in some small.
Contribution.
Toward it, just to show that, again, we have, we have a real interest in learning more detail.
We appreciate that. Kristin, job description. Is this the same, not conversation, but is this the email that we received several months ago with some background on the position? I'm just, want to make sure I have the right email. Okay, go right ahead.
So we had a clerk position that was approved a couple of years ago, and we had requested that prior to COVID. And kind of what I had just shared with the numbers, we saw a big increase during COVID of people participating in services, reaching out for assistance with, oh, my gosh, what am I going to do? And so kind of the needs, when we brought in that clerical position, the needs of the staff really changed a lot throughout COVID. And we're finding that having that clerk position, which was vacated in July, is not really the most efficient use of the town's money, in my opinion. I think what we would be better served with is bringing somebody in to manage the activities and the volunteer coordination. So the structure of the center right now is we're open Monday through Friday from nine to three for a total of thirty hours a week. That's kind of the documented hours. You will find me there. Other hours, and Tess as well. Tess and I only have one day of overlap, which is on Tuesdays. If nobody comes in with a crisis, which is a big if, usually we have at least one person in crisis on a Tuesday, then we have six hours a week to kind of coordinate the different events and activities. And oftentimes, that gets interrupted. So what we're finding is it's very difficult to coordinate things like trips, events, programs that are coming in, because if someone comes in to talk to me about it on a Monday, and I don't get a chance to talk to Tess, it's another week before I do get to talk to her about it. If we're trying to plan transportation or things, something happens on a Wednesday, it's a whole week. So it's really kind of dragging things down in terms of getting things done efficiently there. In looking at the clerical position, we were able to, by increasing our volunteers and making better use of our data management system, we were able to absorb a lot of what we were planning that clerk position to do. We found a lot of people that came out during COVID, and we were able to hold on to them. So for the volunteer hours, in fiscal year seventeen, we had a total of seven hundred and ninety volunteer hours. In the last fiscal year, we had two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one volunteer hours. So that is a two hundred and fifty percent increase in volunteers. And we've kind of hit like a saturation point. I have people that I'm sure would be interested in volunteering more, but I don't have more time to, you know, train them and guide them and meet with them and be that point person, because I'm doing the social services and the facilities management and all of that. So we'd like to kind of convert that clerk piece and move it over into an activity coordinator, volunteer manager position. So, I mean, ideally, I would love it if you'd give me three full-time staff people, but I'm not, I won't ask for that at this meeting. But we would like to, you know, see if there's a way that we can, you know, kind of leave that clerk position either unfilled or get rid of that position and bring on this new one. I did not post that clerical position yet with the hopes that maybe that money that we saved, you know, getting to the town meeting, we could apply to that position. If that makes sense.
So I guess my comment, does anyone have any questions for Kristin? And we, this is, this is old for us. We obviously got this email a while ago, so we have some history here. I guess my comment, kind of concern, is that if we're going to spend the money to do the research, I almost feel, again, like I'm putting the cart before the horse. It might be premature in the sense that what if this study tells us something different? And that's always my concern, is if we're going to spend the money, I would hate to go fill a position now that's part-time when in a year from now, we could be sitting back here and they're going to say, well, you need a full-time senior director. And we're going to say, well, we can't absorb, we can't afford both of these, so what are we going to choose? And one is going to be certainly more important than the other for me. So I guess, I'm a little, I'm a little reluctant to change positions at this time, but how does the board feel?
I'm wondering if there's, I mean, clearly there's an immediate need for, you know, a change in position. I'm wondering if there's something that can be done where somebody's hired in on an hourly basis?
They're all hourly, they're part-time.
Yeah.
You mean like a temp basis, yeah.
But not as a position, but just a temporary.
They, part-time employees only work up to nineteen hours or else they're entitled to benefits. So while they have thirty hours total, Kristin works nineteen and Tess works nineteen. But collectively, they're saying that they're in, they're open thirty hours per week, but there is crossover.
Is there any way to get, you know, clerk is just a name, but it's a position, too, right?
Right, but with the, with the change of position, they're looking for a relatively substantial increase in the hourly rate, correct, Kristin? What's, can you give me the two numbers? You're going from what to what?
Same number of hours.
Same number of hours.
It would be the same number of hours, okay.
Yes. Yeah, so the top end of the clerk's range right now is fifteen sixty-one. So, I mean, I would be looking to bring that up to about the nineteen dollar an hour range, which is still very low, I think, for that position. But I've seen that position in other places, you know, somewhat comparable to that. I mean, ultimately, I'd like to bring our positions up in line with other positions in town. We're still lower than those. But if we can bring this position in around that nineteen, I think we'd be possibly able to fill it. I would love nineteen hours, but even if we could do twelve or fifteen hours, I think that that would alleviate a lot of the burden that we have. And it would take enough off my plate and Tess's plate that's not easy to job-share. I would love someone to do the bills. I'd love to share a clerk with someone. I hate doing the bills. But that's something that one person can do. It's not something that's, you know, or we can job-share that if we need to. The sharing of scheduling activities and confirming this person or that person becomes really, really difficult to do, and it's very inefficient.
So reduced hours at a higher rate to do a different job? I mean, do we have to create a job now?
Yes, so the personnel board would have to vote on a new position description. The town meeting would have to approve a change in the wage and salary scale. And the finance committee and town meeting would have to approve if there's going to be any type of increase in the budget. So there's really three, three things that have to happen. Two of those things happen at town meeting, and one of them, the personnel board, happens here.
Yeah. How about hiring in as a consultant?
Well, I'm doing some numbers over here, and based on the salary range, which I hadn't done before, from nineteen down to the fifteen sixty-one, it's three dollars and thirty-nine cents an hour. At nineteen hours a week for fifty-two weeks in a year, it's thirty-three fifty. It's three thousand dollars. So I'm a lot more comfortable with a number like that in getting.
But the clerk was not funded at nineteen.
What were they funded at, Kristin?
I have a total, I didn't write the hours. I have nine thousand nine hundred and thirty. I have a total, I didn't write the hours. I have nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-four.
And what was the
So I I want to say it was between between ten and twelve hours per week. She didn't work a consistent
So what was the
Week schedule.
What was the allowable hours for the clerk? She didn't work a consistent schedule or, but how many hours were dedicated to that position?
I believe it was between ten and twelve.
In this new position that you are looking to create, would you be looking to bring them in for ten to twelve or more?
I I mean, ideally, keeping, trying to keep the cost down. I think fifteen would be great. I mean, nineteen, obviously better, but I think fifteen would be really kind of the goal for that.
Okay, so we're looking at a difference.
So I'm wondering if Brendan, a consultant could be hired in for, until the study came out, to do that service?
The problem, problem with that is you can't use the labor or the wage line to pay a consultant. You need to convert that over to an expense line, which they probably don't have a large enough expense line to pay a consultant. So you still need to go to town meeting.
Yep.
So based on the finance committee booklet and the clerical part-time, it's twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars is the actual wages. If they were looking to do this position at fifteen hours, at nineteen dollars an hour roughly, it's two eighty-five a week. Time is fifty-two weeks in a year. It's fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, which is a difference of twenty-three hundred dollars. So
That's fifty-two, so it'd be even less than that because
Based on, again, their needs and twenty-three hundred additional dollars a year, I'm fine with that. What I would recommend, though, is that we, my concern is always allowing for this change in the position or creating the new one with a new title and all of the things that we're going to put into the body of the job description, which will, the town administrator will work with you, you'll, you'll write it, you'll send it to him, we'll get a look at it, we'll add comments, would be to realize that the goal would not be to get you this position this year and then come back next year and say, but now we need a clerk, because now those volunteers are not coming in at the two thousand hours we were getting. So that's always a concern for us is that when the board change is over, the people sitting here today won't be before you necessarily next year. And all of a sudden, it's a different makeup. And we're like, wait a minute, didn't we, you know, just give them that position? So, and I realize that there are needs there, but you can hear the financial concerns that we have based on the conversations you've been in the room for. And Kristin, I know you've been hearing these for years.
Yes.
So
I mean, I have the folks in my office, you know, I have the daily impact of the tax rate and everything else.
Right. So you understand that.
Absolutely.
Knowing that the position may change again once the study is out and there's other recommendations, we may want to modify that. Or remove it and create a different one.
Right. I mean, in looking forward, I would think that we would want to pursue moving the director position to full-time at some point to support that three hundred percent growth in participation. I would want to see it more in terms of growth and more reach into the community. But I think that putting in the right positions for what we need can maybe slow some of that down a little bit, because the growth isn't, the growth in the community and the number of seniors isn't slowing down. But trying to make the smart changes can maybe slow down some of those costs for the town.
Okay, so are we feeling Twenty, twenty-three hundred dollars?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with such a short amount of money for them to get the help that they're looking for. So I will entertain a motion to support the proposed job description changes, which will be written, sent to town administrator. He will review, send to us for comments. We'll get it back to you. So make sure it comes to us before it gets officially posted. Oh, it needs to go to town meeting. It needs to salary scale. It has a whole process, but just make sure that you start working with Brendan.
Could that be fall? Yeah.
So I, did I entertain a motion? I did. Did
Yes.
You want to move it? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you support it at what level? Twenty, twenty-five hundred bucks or something like that?
So it's an additional, do you want the exact number?
Well, I'm just saying, it might help if we just have a
Fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, which is fifteen hours a week at nineteen dollars an hour.
So fifteen thousand roughly?
The thing is, by the time you actually hire the person, you will have probably caught up to that. We we may or may not need a lot of money at town meeting. You need the vote on the wage and salary scale. But
Because you're adding
That's would have been if you started on July first.
Right.
So we'll look at the numbers on that. You might not need a lot at all.
Okay.
You might just need the wage and salary scale vote.
Yeah, just change it.
Okay. You're all set? Thank you.
Very much. We really appreciate it.
Have a great night.
You too, Natalie.
We did finish the vote, yes. Okay. I'm going to jump around the agenda for, just because I know there are people that are with us. So Brendan, if I can keep you on pause for a minute, I know there's been several people on the line that have been waiting. So Paul Fitzpatrick, I see that you have been with us. And I'm going to introduce, if you're there, you can unmute so I can see that you hear me. Okay, so Paul is not unmuting, but that's okay. I'm going to go to under other business discussion regarding lifeguard parking placard at Canomo Point starting the summer of twenty twenty-four. So Paul Fitzpatrick was the president of the Canomo Point Association. And as of September third, Craig Markowitz is now the new president of the Canomo Point Association. I met with the, the, I believe she's called the lifeguard point person, Julie Burrows, who is an Essex resident. And she was saying that one of the difficulties that they have is that the lifeguards come to work daily through the summer. And fortunately for them, this year, every one of the lifeguards has a family member, grandparent, aunt, uncle, where they're parking their car on personal, like private property. But in the past, we've had lifeguards that are not, they don't have family members at Canomo Point, and they may live in Manchester or Hamilton or Ipswich. And they, they're having, they're, they're getting ticketed. They're having difficulties with where to park. So the request of the Canomo Point Association was, would the town be willing to give them a one placard, just one?
Is there only one guard on at a time?
One guard on at a time. And there are typically three shifts a day. So you may have as many as three lifeguards coming on shift. They may do a three-hour shift and then a two-hour shift and a two-hour shift. The the ask is that we create a permanent placard that looks like a handicap placard that hangs from the rearview mirror and that it will hang in the lifeguard shack at Canomo Point. When the lifeguard comes on duty, they take it out of the shack, they hang it on the rearview mirror. When their shift is done, it goes back in the shack. It never leaves that car, that parking spot, that shack. It would be identified, it would be a permanent one. So it wouldn't be a sticker affixed to their car. It would truly be something that hung that the police would be aware of. So that's the request of Canomo Point Association for the lifeguards.
Would it only be in the parking lot itself?
So that's why I was kind of hoping to get more clarity. Paul, did you hear me ask you to unmute?
Might have stepped away, figured we wouldn't get to him for a while.
See if someone else, if someone
Tina, can you unmute and let me see if I can hear you? Tina can hear me.
She's talking, but we still can't hear. But at least
Okay, but at least we know Tina can hear me. Okay. So Paul's not unmuting, so we can't
He probably isn't hearing.
No, he's still unmute. Teresa Whitman just unmuted, but I can't hear Teresa either. Teresa, we can see that you were trying to help us, but unfortunately, we can't hear you. So we can certainly table this. It's not until summer of twenty twenty-four, but I'm putting the idea out there. We can, because we are having some trouble, I can get more information from them. But that is the ask, a permanent placard that would be on the lifeguard-only car that the police would be aware of, that wouldn't leave the point and it would stay in the shack. That's the request and I can certainly get more information about specifically where they park. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I don't have a problem. It'd be nice if they parked where it wasn't premium parking for residents, you know?
You could just put them up in the Canomo Lane Lot.
Do, should we be specific? We could actually write where they can park on.
Does the, you know, the, you know where Canomo Lane is at the top of the hill before you come back down to Clammers Beach?
Yeah.
That, that's usually not fully occupied. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, do you know what they're calling the lifeguard shack? What is that?
Where's that?
That's where they say they park, at the lifeguard shack.
I don't know. There's no building on the water.
Down by the boat house?
Up top? Isn't there a shack there?
The only thing I know of that I would call a shack is their actual boathouse where the Canomo Point Association members meet.
Which is around the corner.
Right. That's right by George's Lot.
Parking over there, that's fine. You know, that's not premium parking.
So let's table it. I'll bring it back at the next meeting and I'll have clarity on where specifically they park. Okay. In the room, Natasha, do you want to join us at the microphone? Perfect. So Natasha is before us this evening. I'm going to take these slow because I actually have a couple of questions and then I know you have a question for me. So bear with me while I pull out all of your licenses, Natasha.
Yes. I have them in a spreadsheet. Next time I'll print it out because it's easy to see.
Well, no, that's okay. It's more about, I was surprised not to see applications parenting each other. So you have some that are for wine and malt, but not an event. And I was surprised by that. So I just want to make sure that it wasn't an oversight.
Yeah.
So bear with me one second. Also, for the board's knowledge, when I read through the agenda before approving it to be posted, I missed that I didn't time some of the licenses for the museum. So when I read these one-day licenses, I'm going to read times into the record as well so that those can be part of our minutes. So bear with me. So the first one, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum Katie Montgomery dedication of the museum archives to James Witham for use on Friday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, from four to six P M. within the confines of a tent at the schoolhouse in Burya Ground, twenty-eight Main Street.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm, I will entertain a motion for, to approve the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum Katie Montgomery Halloween Happenings for use on Monday, October thirtieth, from three thirty to five thirty P M. within the confines of the schoolhouse in Burya Ground, twenty-eight Main Street. After-school pumpkin painting, spooky stories and candy hunt in the schoolhouse in Burya Ground. Cider donuts and cider from Russell Orchard's Ipswich, spooky music on an Alexa speaker.
Can I change something about that, please, if it's possible?
What is it that we're looking to change, Natasha, on that?
I would like to change to the, I noticed after we had submitted the application that the library is doing an activity that same time, a magic show. And if we can change to the Monday prior, I think it's the twenty third, same event, just the date, change same time.
One week earlier to Monday, the twenty-third. So does, does the board have any problem with that change?
No.
Okay. So Natasha, I'm going to have you come, make the changes on your application.
Right now?
And I'm going to have you initial it. So I will entertain a motion to approve So I will entertain the same motion, but we're going to change the date from October thirtieth to October twenty-third.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum Katie Montgomery Santa by boat for use on Friday, December first, from four to seven P M. within the confines of the Essex Shipbuilding Museum, sixty-six Main Street, outdoor enter, outdoor event at the boat ramp in shipyard, live broadcast of Santa's arrival and music, hot cocoa from Woodman's and munchkins from Dunkin' Donuts.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum Katie Montgomery Holiday Market for use on Saturday, December second, twenty twenty-three, within the confines of the Essex Shipbuilding Museum Shipyard, outdoors, sixty-six Main Street, vendors in the Waterline Center, shipyard, weather permitting, orientation center with indoor music, holiday music, sparkling wine served from behind register.
So moved.
Second. I don't think I added that that's from eleven A M. till three P M. I apologize. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. These are the same where I don't have time. So again, bear with me for a moment. These are one-day wine and malts. So the first one is going to be, I will entertain a motion to approve the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum Katie Montgomery dedication of the archives for use on Friday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, from four to six P M. within the confines of the tent at the schoolhouse in Burya Ground, twenty-eight Main Street.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum Katie Montgomery Speakeasy Fall fundraiser for use on Thursday, November ninth, twenty twenty-three, from the hours of six to nine P M. within the confines of the Waterline Center at the Essex Shipbuilding Museum, sixty-six Main Street.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum Katie Montgomery wreath workshop for use on Wednesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, within the confines of the Waterline Center at the Essex Shipbuilding Museum, sixty-six Main Street, from five to nine P M.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum Katie Montgomery Holiday Market for use on Saturday, December second, twenty twenty-three, from eleven A M. to three P M. within the confines of the Waterline Center at the Essex Shipbuilding Museum, sixty-six Main Street.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Katie, I'm, I'm sorry, Natasha. I noticed that we are approving a one-day wine and malt for the Speakeasy Fall fundraiser, but I don't have an entertainment for that.
It's indoors and we have a year permit
Perfect.
For both of those events, the wreath workshop, the holiday market, but the holiday market is now getting, you have a outdoor for that one because it's beyond the Waterline Center. It's also the Orientation Center. So I wanted to make sure that was encompassed.
Those were my other two. So those were, those, you answered all the questions I was going to ask you. As a side note, we had a conversation earlier today that I'm going to bring up as kind of unanticipated since you reached out to me earlier, actually two conversations. So earlier today, Natasha reached out to me, when they do the dedication of the archives, the tent is going to be set up between, at the ancient cemetery at twenty-eight Main Street and the perfect spot where there's a big open rectangle right in the middle, kind of on the back edge of it. There's a bush, it's like, I would call it a weed, overgrown bush, shrub that is out of control. And they were requesting permission to actually cut it down because it would be right in the placement of where the tent would be. So I've reached out to the superintendent of Public Works, who was more than happy to remove it, give, if he would receive permission. I also reached out to both co-chairs of the Conservation Commission to make sure that it didn't fall within the wetlands, under the Wetlands Protection Act. And both of them did get back to me later this afternoon and they had no problem. They said it was outside, it only required a hundred-foot buffer. It's actually outside the three hundred-foot buffer. So that is acceptable to them as well. I did show the board a picture of the bush to, or whatever we want to call it, to see if they had any
The scrub?
Quit the scrub to make sure that there were no questions. So just for the record, I'm going to, it's, it's unanticipated. It's not on the agenda, but because it just came in at a late hour, I'm going to entertain a motion to authorize the removal of the shrub at twenty-eight Main Street.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is all set. And you also asked me, again, under unanticipated, we were going to talk about another license that the board has already approved.
Approved license, yes.
So if you can give the board just a little explanation about what happened today when you got your phone call and why you reached out to me.
Yes. So I had reserved Steel Drum Band for the Fall Festival, which is happening in September twenty-third, next weekend. That was approved back in the spring when I applied for all my spring and summer permits. I got a call from the bass player or finalize, I mean, from the Steel Drum Band and he wanted, initially, when I requested them, I did let them know that there was a initially when I requested them, I did let them know that there was a ordinance of no amplified music. We typically don't, policy. I typically don't apply for, try to push those. But he did mention that his bass player was an essential part of his band and he does play an amplified bass. And I was asking, it's a public event, it's a grant-funded public event, open to everyone, it's one to four P M. And I was hoping that the board would entertain allowing that to happen.
So Natasha was looking to see if the board would entertain an amendment to the already approved one day. So we gave her the one-day outdoor entertainment because it wasn't amplified. She's looking to amend that license to see if we would allow for a one to four.
A one to four.
Outdoor amplified via the same Alexa slash Bluetooth speaker for the one bass is what you're looking for. Not the entire band, it's just the one bass.
One bass, yes.
I'm fine with that. I would imagine the bass is a lot quieter than the steel drums.
Do you want to make a motion for that, Peter? Because I don't remember. Do you have a copy of the license, Natasha?
I do. I have the license number. Or you want the entire?
Let me just take a peek at what you have there in your hand. Okay, so do you, are you fine with this amendment to the license? Okay. So because it falls outside the policy and we know that I stick to the policy, I'm going to have you entertain a motion, Peter, to allow her to amend that license to add.
I will entertain a motion to allow the amendment to the what is this permit?
September 23rd.
September 23rd, Fall Festival permit for outdoor entertainment.
With amplified, with amplification.
Which includes now amplified music.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain. So if you can give that back to Natasha. Natasha, could you please stop into the Selectmen's Office one day this week and Pam will have you amend the license in our office and just initial it. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Lindsay, do you want to join us so we can try to get you out the door as well?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. So we have one license to ratify. Rivers Bend at Essex Marina LLC, Kirk Bergeron, for use on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, from three-ten to four-ten P M, within the confines of the Rivers Bend Lawn Ceremony Music via Bluetooth Speaker and Mic Deficient. This was a late-breaking situation where the wedding party had intended to get married at Lynch Park in Beverly and kind of at the eleventh hour, something changed with transportation, getting them from Beverly to Essex or whatnot. And Lindsay reached out to the town and asked if there was any way that they could do their generally-approved one-hour mic deficient situation. And the town administrator sent that email request around to the board. We all individually got back to him and it appears as if, given that it's on the agenda, there was a majority of us that were willing to allow this. So I will entertain a motion to approve the ratification of this license.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to recuse because I didn't, because I'm just going to recuse. I think it makes it easier. Okay. One-day entertainment license. We have Rivers Bend at Essex Marina LLC, Kirk Bergeron, for use on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, from four-ten to five-ten P M, within the confines of Rivers Bend Lawn Ceremony Music, Bluetooth Speaker, Mic Deficient. As well as a Rivers Bend at Essex Marina LLC, Kirk Bergeron, for use on Saturday, September 30th, 2023, from four-ten to five-ten P M, within the confines of Rivers Bend Lawn Ceremony Music via Bluetooth Speaker and Mic Deficient. So
This is, it's three fifteen to four fifteen?
Four-ten to five-ten.
That's, oh, okay.
September 23rd and September 30th.
Oh, yeah, okay.
On the previous page.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So they're the same one-hour mic deficient with the Bluetooth speakers.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I will recuse. And then the last one is a one-day Sunday entertainment, Rivers Bend at Essex Marina LLC, Kirk Bergeron, for use on Sunday, October 8th, 2023, from three-fifteen to four-fifteen P M, within the confines of the Rivers Bend Lawn Ceremony Music via Bluetooth Speaker, Mic Deficient.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And recuse.
Did you see the second portion of that? So the second portion of that is to then have a DJ inside the building.
On Sunday?
Sunday, yes. And that would be from four-fifteen to ten-fifteen.
To ten-fifteen.
Yes.
So bear with me, Lindsay.
Yeah, sure. I probably could have wrote it a little better.
So just, nope, that's okay. I'm going to add it to the minutes so that we capture that.
I tried to spell it out better on the official, like, Sunday breakdown.
So this is for Sunday license. So adding to the motion or changing the motion we just took, Rivers Bend at Essex Marina LLC, Kirk Bergeron, for use on Sunday, October 8th, 2023, from three-fifteen to four-fifteen, within the confines of the Rivers Bend Lawn Ceremony Music via Bluetooth Speaker for the mic deficient and then moving the DJ inside between the hours of four-fifteen and ten-fifteen P M.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. So you're all set.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well. Be careful. And then I'm just going to get this last license done. I will entertain a motion to approve the senior senior commercial shellfish permit for Richard Bucksco. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Brendan, if you want to start your report.
Did we do the other, all alcohol?
Oh.
Might as well do that.
Sure. I will entertain a motion to approve the annual all-alcohol restaurant license for Bea Moore Hospitality LLC, D B A, the James North Shore, Mary Kylie Manager, fifty-five Main Street. That was previously approved by the Selectmen and recently approved by the A B C C.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First in my report is an update on the downtown decorative lighting project. Looking at how the engineer's estimate came out once the design was completed for just the subsurface portion of the lighting work. This includes the installation of feeder conduits from existing handholds, handholds. As well as the installation of subsurface bases for all the lights and some bases for the cabinets and of course, any concrete demolition and then replacement work. The reason we're doing that under a separate bid is because the town of Ipswich, the municipal light department is actually going to be installing the lights, which we can save money on because we don't have to pay prevailing wage to Ipswich for that. So since Ipswich doesn't, is not really equipped to do the subsurface work, we went out to bid for that and we got the estimate. If we look at the amount of money that we have put aside versus what's spent to date, we quickly find that with the one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar estimate for the subsurface work, and that's if it comes in at that, right? We're out to bid right now for it. We're really, we really only have about sixty-six thousand dollars. That would have to pay for Ipswich labor and it would have to pay for all of the lights themselves. The poles, the luminaires, the plant hangars and the banner hangars. And we already know, because we got a quote off of the state contract for all of those things, that that's one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars on its own. And since the plans for the project just got finalized, we don't even have the labor number from Ipswich yet. But it really doesn't matter. There isn't enough money in the project to put the lights in this season. The subsurface work will be done. The one thing that I don't really like about it, but we're going to have to live with it, is we're going to have to put a cone or some kind of a cap on top of each of the twenty-three light bases because you're going to see a metal plate with bolts.
Until the lights up.
Until the lights up, that would be in the spring. So we have to protect it from people tripping, but also from the town plow. The sidewalk plow. And so you're going to go through a winter with cones or probably cones on top of each one of those, those things. That's the drawback, but
You mean like traffic cones?
Yeah, unless we can come up with something else, some kind of can or something that looks better.
And these are going to be on the inside, outside of the sidewalk. They're not going to be making the sidewalk any smaller, correct?
No, they're going to be directly behind the curb.
Going to be directly behind the curb.
Yep. And the reason that they're only on one side of the street, which is the landward side of, of the causeway, not the, not the seaward side, is that that sidewalk has much less of a restriction to, on back of sidewalk for either the plow or a baby carriage or whatever, to get around the light pole than if you put it on the seaward side where there's a sea wall and other restrictions. So that's how it was, that's how it's been set up.
It's a tripping hazard, as you know. I mean, the amount of people, even in our winters, you know, as long as the sidewalks shovel, people walk. So that would be my only concern.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to cover it securely. But so the question then becomes, we obviously are going to need more money to actually install the lights in the spring. We will know the result of the subsurface bid very soon, so we'll know how much to deduct for that. We will know what Ipswich's labor charges is going to be, by town meeting for sure, Fall Town Meeting. And we already know what the quote is for the lights. So we can do that math. It's a question of, is, is the board interested in putting that in front of the Fall Town Meeting?
How much? How much money do we have?
Three thousand ninety-nine dollars in our stabilization for lights.
How much?
Three thousand dollars.
That's it?
Well, that's for maintenance of lights. That's, that's if like an LED goes down or a pole strike or something like that. That's not. That's the lighting maintenance budget.
So we're looking at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
You're looking at the one-eighty-three just to buy the lights. Minus, say, sixty, so you're, because we have sixty left over, right? So it's one-twenty-five, let's say. Then it's going to cost a certain amount of money for Ipswich and I just, I don't know what that number is yet.
Yeah, and then
there'll be some money for police details, which I did a little deduction on for that.
And the subsurface work.
And, and the actual number, the actual subsurface. If we assume one-eighty, you know, yeah, I could definitely see another two-hundred thousand or so being needed. Yeah.
It's a lot of money, but I think we've already spent money to get this far. Right.
And of course, let's, let's remember that the state installed all the handholds and the mainline conduit
Right.
at no cost to the town. Back in two thousand nine, I think, something like that.
I'm sorry, so you said another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Two-hundred. Is it a rough guess right now? But we won't know until the bid comes in, until we get Ipswich's labor cost.
What else are we going to do, you know, not do anything?
That's for twenty-three lights.
And so I guess that twenty-three lights on Main Street seems like an awful lot. And I don't know that that would save any money if we reduce the number of lights, but
You're going to save.
We've already said, okay, so we, you know, we have this one-hundred-and-eighty thousand for this and seven, but now it's an additional two-hundred K. That's a lot.
Well, this is part of the problem with projects that don't move as quick as you'd like them to. It's, it's like the fire truck, right? So three years ago when they said, our ladder truck is about to fall into complete dust. It was a seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar buy and now it's one point two. So it's, it's the same problem that we're having, which is just the, you know, supply chain issues, cost of goods, everything is going up.
I'll say this, Al, if you get the subsurface set up for the twenty-three lights and you get to town meeting and you have to have some lesser amount of money because it's not really going to fly, well then, yeah, then you could purchase less lights only to stay within the amount of money that's available. But I wouldn't recommend not putting in the bases for twenty-three lights because that, you can always add to that in the future. You know, you're going to come in once, you're going to rip it up and you're going to have the subsurface prepared.
Well, I think this was part of, it's, it's multifaceted. This is something that the Economic Development Committee has been working on for a long time. It's something that, for years. The place-making that we just got our complete proposal, like, while we were undergoing all the place-making stuff.
There's a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars worth of grant money and it's still going to cost more.
Right. And, and that was all part of it, is that to make downtown Essex a homey place that you want to come and visit and shop and stay, let's make it warm and inviting. I mean, which comes with a cost.
So the other, only other thing I was going to bring up about it is there's got to be some type of a budget for cleaning the lights because I took a picture of an Ips, one of the Ipswich lights. That's exactly what we're probably going to end up getting. It's filthy. I mean, it's filthy. And that to me, now you're going to have twenty-three lights running down a road that are going to be filthy if we don't put some money aside to take care of them and actually wash that glass at least once a year type of thing.
We have three thousand ninety-nine dollars. It's the maintenance fund.
That's going to get us far.
Well, that, that, let me see that for a second. That could be in a particular fiscal year. Because the goal there is we've been putting money aside every year so that when we have to replace LED luminaires, the money's there. So let me just look at this. That almost seems like the amount of money that we ask. We have this fund and it all goes in there and then every year.
Annually? You think that's an annual?
We add to it. We, we add to it every year. And then what's supposed to happen is in any given year, we have a budget set in case we need to use some of it. That money is actually funded through the larger fund. And then if it doesn't get spent, it goes back into the fund where it came from. So I'll, I'll look at that, but I think we have more, more than that in there.
And I was even thinking, you know, if we want to have a beautified downtown Essex, then maybe a fundraising type of thing where people that want to donate so that they get the flowers, we get the, you know.
Businesses.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that's really the line I'm thinking is that we, we don't just put them in, but we actually maintain them after we put them in.
So one of the things that the Economic Development Committee is working on is that once we get the light posts installed, as you know, they're going to have flower hanging baskets as well as the flag, ability to hang the flags. And they're not quite there yet, but I think that the goal will be to sell advertising to the businesses to hang their flag or whatever. So you're going to see a Guggins Galley flag on one of the light posts, maybe as part of the, it's a, whatever it is, a hundred-dollar fee to hang your flag on the post, but you also need to make sure it's washed or, or something. I mean, so those are things that they can talk about when they get to that point, but great idea.
I just happened to notice it because I'm like, oh, I think these are the same light posts that, oh my God, that is filthy up there. And this has been there quite a while. Don't get me wrong, I know that.
So yes, I think that we should add it to Fall Town Meeting and
Which we're going to talk, I took a note in there.
You'll take, okay.
Yeah. So the next thing is an optional additional retiree health insurance offering. Presently, retirees that are under the age of sixty-five are on the active health insurance plan. When they get to sixty-five, they can either go to Managed Blue for Seniors, which is a HMO, or they can go to MedX Two, which is a or they can go to MedX2, which is a PPO. It's kind of the gold standard plan. MedX2, the government is primary on that, whereas this new thing that is being asked about is called MedX Advantage, which puts the carrier, the private company, as primary. It's also a PPO. It can, it would be enough of a reduction from MedX2 for people to potentially be interested in it. Somebody who lives in a different state is not gonna be on the HMO because they're out of network, so they're on MedX2 right now. But this other MedX Advantage thing would allow them to do the same thing for, for less money. I think it's fine to, to bring it on because we're not replacing MedX2 with it. If you replace a product that's government-backed with a product that's kind of a new try at private backing, I, I think that would be a disservice to, because who knows where that's gonna go, right? A disservice to the retirees. So I don't see any issue at all. Again, it would be at the 60% town share, not 75%. So the town pays 75% for the HMO, but 60% for the PPO, and this is another PPO. So just like MedX2, you would have to pay 60%, not, the town would only pay 60%, and the employee would have to pay 40%, whereas the HMO, Managed Blue for Seniors...
So it's not gonna cost the town anymore?
No.
It's just another option for the rent.
And we'll see how many takers we have.
So if there's only one taker, will it change the percentage? You know what I mean? Like usually it's based on volume?
The, our insurance carrier said if there's only one taker, they'll, they'll take them on.
So I have a lot of questions.
Yep.
MedX Advantage is not new. This is a plan that's been around for a long time.
It's new to...
So that was my question. Is it new to MYHA?
Yeah.
In new meaning 2023?
They, see, our, our retiree health insurance runs on a calendar year.
Okay.
So January 1, 2024. And they're trying to get out ahead of whether it's something we even want, because then the retirees have to get messaging, et cetera.
So January 1, 2024 is the start of this offer to municipalities through MYHA?
Correct.
Okay. Was this just requested, was this information sent to the town out of the blue or was it requested?
We did not request it.
Okay.
So MYHA approached us saying, "We have this new offering, and we wanna know whether it's something the town wants to try."
Okay. You comment here, "And is not constrained by where a retiree chooses to live." Did the town offer, prior to this, did retirees that chose to live outside of Massachusetts have an insurance option through the town?
MedX2.
MedX2.
Which is the PPO, which costs more money, and they have to pay a higher share for, but it comes with the, with the benefit of being able to live wherever you want. Whereas if you stay on Managed Blue for Seniors, you're always gonna be out of network once you leave New England, I believe.
But we always had an option for people that lived outside of Massachusetts.
MedX2, which, which will still be in place.
In, in place, okay. Since this is a new plan that's being offered as of the first of the year, will this be offered to anybody that would retire 1124 forward? Or would it be retroactive, meaning people that are already locked into one plan now? Because it's open enrollment, and during open enrollment, you can change...
So even now, you could change back and forth between the two that we have. This will just be that you could select any one of the three that we have. So it would be anyone that's already on a plan with us, or anyone in the future who retires.
Would it include anybody that doesn't currently, that is not eligible for health insurance through the town? Would it open us up to more exposure?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, if you're not eligible for health insurance, then you don't get, now, what would be three options? Right now, you don't get, what are two options?
Okay. Prior to becoming a regional school district, we had teachers that were part of the town's employ. Will this alter that in any way? Meaning that, will we be absorbing any additional costs that we didn't anticipate because those teachers from 20 years ago are gonna now jump on this that would increase anything? I'm just worried about cost here.
That, that came up, and the treasurer is currently looking into that as to whether they can even opt for this. Because there was, there was some kind of a ruling about that, that they had to go on something and stay on it when, when the regionalization happened.
So I thought when the regionalization happened, the, like, right now, the retirees are still on their district's budget, not on...
No, anyone who retired while we still had an Essex School Department is with the town.
Okay.
Anyone who retired from the district is with the district, as far as retirees' support.
When was that?
23 years ago.
Well, 2000 is when the district began.
Right.
But there were people who retired prior to 2000 who were from the Essex School Department. They, they stayed with the town as far as retiree benefits.
And they could be part...
For health insurance.
They could be part of this if they wanted.
So I got on this...
I don't know about that. There was a question raised.
Would it matter?
Depends on what they're on now, right? Because it costs the town, even at, it costs the town more if they come off of Managed Blue.
Yeah.
Because it's a much higher cost.
And then the final question that I have is regarding, I'm assuming, so you mentioned in here the federal government. We talk about, instead of the federal government, such as is the case with MedX2. So is this being supplemented so that the government can get out from being an insurance provider?
I believe that's what they're asking to occur, yes. Which is why it's very important that you don't take away the, the other one, you don't replace it.
Well, my concern is, is this a government bait and switch, where they're gonna sell us on this wonderful idea that we're gonna love and say it doesn't cost us anything, and then they're gonna pull the rug out from under us in three years or five years and say, "We supplemented this, but now you're on your own and you're offering this big plan," or this...
In other words, they would say, "We're not gonna back MedX2 anymore."
Right.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but...
Can we drop it then?
Yeah, that's my next question. Can we drop it? Once we offer it, we probably can't, correct?
I can, well, it's not, it's different than active insurance, because benefits for retirees are determined by the Board of Selectmen, not by union contracts. So it's a lot different.
Okay. So I guess that gives us...
Some control.
Some control.
Yeah.
I think we should ask that question, though. If at any time the government share of what they're supplementing changes, do we have, you know...
We're on the hook, and we can't drop it, yeah.
And I think, you know, from a, we're setting policy without specific financials, I think it would be helpful to know, what is the government's share? What would we be on the hook for if they say, "We're done helping fund this"? I don't know if we can get that answer.
Yeah, what we are gonna have, and we don't have it right yet, is what this is gonna look like financially versus MedX2. We don't have those numbers yet. Let me talk to our representative about some of these questions, and I think we still have time, even if you bring this up again in two weeks.
Okay. So I would...
So you wanna know, first of all, if you do elect to bring this third option on, can you, can you drop it?
Can you drop it? Can we dissolve it at any time and have the retiree revert back to one of the other options?
Mm-hmm. And also, you wanna know whether there are any particular groups of people who are not going to be eligible for this third option. Because we do have a group of retired teachers, and there may be certain rules around that.
Yeah.
I'm not specifically trying to exclude the teachers, I'm just thinking about retirees at deep...
Well, no, the, the teachers thing, the rule may have already been set, so we're just gonna make sure that we know whether they can or they can't. So we already talked a little bit about the School Budget Collaboration Group meeting. Every, all the board members have a summary. I don't know if there were any particular comments on what you've read, but the goal of the collaborative is to make sure that at every subsequent board meeting, whether that's Selectmen School Committee or Finance Committee, in either of the two towns, there's a chance for adequate feedback based on the report of the collaborative. I happened to key in on the fact that if the budget comes in any higher than 2.5% to Essex, which would require the overall to be like the ones, right? And as you heard from the town accountant, the, the town would not be able to afford that outside of an override, cuts, or change in the apportionment formula, I guess you could say, or a combination of these things. And I think if the, if the board, if the board agrees, you're not, you're not committing to what a solution would be, but you agree that as it stands now, you need those things to happen, correct? If it, if it does come in higher than 2.5% to Essex, because there's no more reserve levy capacity.
Right. So, well, those are our options. I mean, it's spelled out pretty clearly. Our options are those.
Yep. And then I think I'll mention that the, the collaborative would like to make sure that all the boards and the finance committees are able to meet together to discuss this. And so that's going to be called like an all-boards meeting, and we've put aside September 19th for a date on that. The Collaboration Group will meet tomorrow and come up with a final agenda that we can get around to everyone.
I will not be able to attend, I'll be away.
The all-boards on the 19th?
19th, yeah.
It's at 7:00 PM in the Learning Commons of the middle high school.
And the date was chosen because of different other things that the school committee needs to schedule, and so it really appeared as a date that seemed like it was one of the only dates possible for at least this first meeting. And we'll, we'll give you more information about that meeting and post the meeting when we get closer to it. All right, any other questions on that, that summary? Next, we move to the draft fall town meeting warrant. So this is the first meeting at which, presenting what the warrant will look like, prior to this, you've looked at a list of potential topics. I will run down from, from the top here. Article one has to do with whether or not the town meeting should begin a half hour earlier, 7:00 instead of 7:30. And that would be for both the fall town meeting and the annual town meeting.
So I just wanted to say, so I did that survey on Facebook, and as Jody had mentioned, you know, not all of them were residents or current residents. The overwhelming majority was 6:30. I get the 7:00. I think it's better than 7:30, but I just wanted to say that.
How many total people took the survey?
So 36 took the, took the survey, and it was like, nobody picked 7:30. Two people picked 7:00, and then the split was between the 6:30 and the 6 o'clock.
Do you want me to put in the article?
There was a part of me that thought, well, what if we break between the two and do 6:45? That way, any of the boards that have meetings can still have a decent meeting before, and, you know, it gives time for people to show up.
Can it be, can the time be set on town?
Well, this is what I was gonna say. You could say, "By deleting 7:30 PM in each section and replacing with some earlier time." We'd say that, some earlier time.
I think that's dangerous.
Well, this is the question, right?
I agree, but...
I think not being committed to a time could be a problem.
But commit to a time, but it could be changed if you set it...
We can change it anytime we wanna bring it back.
If you put a time in here, you cannot change it on the floor.
You can, okay.
If you said some earlier time, it would be anytime prior to 7:30.
But what I'm saying is, we can take this to town meeting, and we could change this every single time we go to a town meeting for future town meeting.
Right, right, but if you put, if you put a specific time in the article, you can't change it in the motion.
Correct. But if we leave it open-ended to people getting up for discussion and saying, "I want 5:30, I want 6:00," the next thing you know, it'll never end. It'll be, I think...
So you want a, a proposal, and right now, the, the proposal says 7:00. Is that what you agree with, or do you wanna put a different number in there?
I'm okay with 7:00. I mean, it's incremental and, you know...
Well, I'm wondering if we do it at 7:00 and try it for a couple of years and see if we're still getting the pushback of, "It would be nice if it was earlier." I mean, I get that, "It would be nice if it were Saturday all the time."
Right.
You know what I mean?
You, you can't do it at 7:00, because we have to change the bylaw. The bylaw prescribes 7:30. You can't just do it at 7:00.
No, 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 leaving our...
Oh, if you, if this passes.
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm saying, why don't we leave the article for 7:00 PM start time? And then if it passes, we try it for a couple of years, and then we revisit.
Why bother changing it? A half hour, what's a...
Half hour's a half hour, you know?
Well, you can take the article off.
Or we can, I mean, I'm flexible. I, listen, I'm gonna be there at 6:00 for my meeting, so I'm happy to change to whatever time. I just don't wanna leave it open-ended on town meeting floor to have a discussion about.
That would be a nightmare.
And I think, even, let's say you picked 6:45 right now. I don't even think somebody could say, "Well, no, how about 7:00?" You either say some other time, right? Or you say a time. There's no really two ways about it.
And I'm fine with 6:45. Like you said, we're there at 6:00 for a meeting, so I'm flexible. I just... Well, that's why I think it's been 7:30.
They don't vote a time meeting.
But here's the thing, we have now two town meetings a year. You can't tell me that 50% of the people that show up are coming in from Boston.
No.
So if we see our counts go drastically down, then we, we bring it back up and say, "Oh, there's too many people from Boston."
So you're advocating for 6:30 or 6:45?
I'm okay with 6:45. I think, because that way, we can do that volunteer type of thing, we can get it, it still doesn't...
If all the people from Boston are at the meeting, they'll vote it down. If they won't be there, hey, we should put it as Article 28 or whatever.
Well, they'll be there at this meeting, because it starts at 7:30.
Yeah, that's true.
So, okay, I'm writing in 6:45. Agreed? Okay.
Yeah.
Article two is just taking the money that was collected prior to the new sticker, which was last fiscal year, and taking that representative amount of money and putting it into this fiscal year, because it was really intended for this fiscal year. The collection of money the next time around can be timed differently, but it couldn't for this kickoff one, so...
So this is just to move that money from...
Into the fiscal year for, really, for which it was intended. Then the, the fact that the town purchases bags from the vendor, or to at least have bags at the warehouse, right? We pay for the production runs of these bags. While it's true that the individual stores are the ones that actually pay for bags to leave the warehouse, that money goes into the general fund, yet the town, when it's time to replenish the bag order, is not seeing that, that money from, in that particular budget line. So we have to look at, of course, making sure that we have enough money to do bag runs through the end of this fiscal year, as well as trying to determine how we'll make it easier going forward. But that's what this, that's what this article is about. Articles four through 10 would be zoning articles, and this is the list that the chairman of the planning board provided to us recently at that joint meeting. Okay? We don't have specific proposals yet, but that's a preview. We don't have specific proposals yet, but that's a preview. Article 11 would be to see if the moratorium on changes of use could be extended. And that would be if the zoning articles, or certain zoning articles that were proposed previously in Articles four through 10 didn't work out well, and the planning board felt that success was not good enough to warrant the dropping of the moratorium, which will expire on its own if nothing is done, right? This would be a way to keep it in play. And so either this article gets read, because things in Articles four and 10, four through 10, didn't go well, or this article just gets postponed and the moratorium falls off on its own, okay? Article 12 is another attempt at what really, as far as we know, is gonna break down to eminent domain for interests in private property adjacent to the Apple Street project. This includes thin strips of land along the road and a couple of areas where we need to replicate wetlands. This time around, we'll have a very detailed projection on the screen showing exactly what is being discussed, as opposed to, I guess, you know, some people may have been confused the first time, they thought entire properties were being taken over, et cetera. And in fact, when, if a taking is actually authorized by the town meeting, we're talking about easement taking, not fee simple, even for the small pieces that are being looked at.
And when you say projected, so will it be something where it's a live picture, and then there's an overlay that shows what type of easement would be required? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, we're gonna have, yes. It's an aerial...
This is what it looks like.
This is how big it is.
It's an aerial photograph that shows the large expanse of each property, and it shows the relatively small portion of easement that's being asked for adjacent to our project.
Were they gonna get photographs?
We have, we have it.
Photographs to show?
Oh, well, that's...
This is what it looks like?
Yeah, that's what our engineer is still working on, but we did the aerials already.
Yeah, I got the aerials. But it would be nice to see, you know, it's just this rocky, shrubby, steep area that doesn't matter, you know? You're not doing anything with it. I don't think people understand that.
Yeah, and he started to do that.
Even though that's what all of Apple Street is, you know, I don't think people understand.
So that's how that one's gonna go. So this would be, the next two have to do with, and they're coupled, and you have to do both of them, they have to do with the short-term rental and the community impact fee. As the board recalls, the hotel motel tax, which also applies to short-term rentals automatically, has already been increased from 4% to 6%. This would be another 3%, so the total would be 9% on short-term rentals, and it would stay at 6% for hotel motel. With respect to this, there was a question that came up as to whether, in the article itself, there can be a description of what a short-term rental is. Town council has said yes, and he's gonna build that into it for you. So the next iteration of this draft warrant will show you what that looks like.
There was the concern with people with rental income that they didn't want to vote for this, because if they had an apartment in their home, they were concerned they were gonna get a fee, but the description says anything that you're renting for less than 30 days.
Yeah.
So if we...
And one of the questions that came to my head at one point was, like, I know that if you rent it through Airbnb, it's automatically taken out through that once.
Yep.
Put that in. But what if you're renting it through a real estate agent? Do they have to, would real estate agents have to put it on the lease?
Well, ultimately, it's the one that's doing the renting that's supposed to tender the money, but if you're part of a service that does it automatically, you don't need to worry about it.
Right. So like, you're a landlord, you own a rental property. I'm sure with your accountant, when you file your taxes, you declare what your income was from that rental, so you're just supposed to do that.
But how does the money get to you? How does the money get to us?
Through the DOR, because you pay your taxes. So your accountant says you owe us $6,000 this year.
K, k, k.
And DOR goes, oh, well, she made X amount in rental income, so she owes the town of Essex $98, and they take it that way.
Article 15 would be that special act for capping your property taxes. I don't know, Peter, if you had any other, I think you asked for another example.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't done anything on this.
So take a look at what we've provided before, and I think...
Can I just bring up the subject I brought up to you, Brendan, which is the fact that, you know, that criteria, how do you decide who meets the need to get...
There's a committee.
Okay. Well, and I say that only because I'm just concerned about, you know, as they said, grandparents are raising their grandchildren. Well, if they're living in their house and going to our school, because I'm the owner, I'd feel guilty, I really would feel guilty, if I had renters in there that, you know, were using the school system.
Well, unfortunately, not everybody has the conscience that you have, and that's gonna be a problem, because the, and you know I completely support the seniors, but for people that aren't as honest, that could be problematic. Because what families might move in with their elderly grandparents and send their kids to the school because of the address and the community, and yet they're capped on taxes. So it is something to consider. It could be a major problem for us.
And now Brendan was saying that it's illegal to be able to put even a stipulation in that it said, if you have children in the school system at that address, you can't...
Oh, that seems like you're completely discriminating. Yeah.
And like you said, I mean, when you're talking 40% of the population, if they're homeowners, I don't know if that 40% are all homeowners, you know, that does...
No, what did they say? They said, I have that.
There's a limitation on the total.
75% of our seniors are homeowners.
Yeah, 75% of us are.
I guess my concern is...
Which, what are the rest? They're living with somebody?
They're living, they live in assisted, like...
Or they're living with their children or whatever.
Housing authority, right, exactly. And my concern is, we still have a budget that we need to fund, and those dollars come from somewhere, so if we cap it for person A, person B is just paying more in taxes to help person A. I'm not saying I don't want to be helpful, I'm just saying we need to be careful how we dive into this.
How many people are in it?
Right.
You know, I mean, if there's not many, which the other communities have said there aren't that many.
Harvard said that most people won't even apply.
Well, and the other thing is, is having to apply every year?
Which is a tough, tough...
Deters, yeah.
Yeah, for...
Well, we're gonna end up having to have a full-time employee to help them apply. Kidding, not kidding.
All right, Article 16 is to see whether the Affordable Housing Trust should get more money put into it from the Community Preservation Fund. Article 17 is the town's apportioned amount or share for the turf field work that's going on.
What is that now?
One point...
One point two. We're basically saying the town share is about $400,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Then... It's all completed now, correct?
No, it's delayed.
No, I think tomorrow is the completion date of the second field. Actually, is Teresa still on?
I thought it got delayed, didn't it?
She's not on there.
She's not. I feel like it was weather-related. It was delayed by about one week. I think it was supposed to originally wrap up for the first of September, and it got pushed out a little bit.
Okay.
No, it wasn't weather, it was testing. Wasn't it rubber testing, maybe?
There was some kind of...
Some sort of rubber testing.
Yeah. Then we have the ladder truck replacement. And the fiber optic municipal area network extension, now this one, I think should go forward, because we have, what, Pam, like $94,000 or something in the cable technology fund, town technology fund, which can only be spent on things like this? So even though, when we first talked about it, it seemed like, well, we don't know if we'll have the money, if you use that fund, and the total... Have it here.
Will this just go to the cottage?
No. So the poles go through the woods along the nature trail, and then they split.
Yeah.
One set of poles goes to the cottage, the other set goes over to the concession stand.
Okay.
So there would be the ability to have both Wi-Fi and cameras at both main areas of the Grove. The cost is just under $20,000, and that includes the camera system and the Wi-Fi transmitters. And you have enough money, so this one should probably go forward, I would say.
In the benefit of the fact that having that, if we rental, for rental purposes, to be able to have that corporate retreats can use Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, so then Article 20, this is more beautification money with the goal of, in FY '25 budget, actually having a line item for it. Then I show a couple of things that weren't final, but before we even get to that, this is where, like, right after Article 20, this is where I put the money for additional lighting, for the lighting project, okay? So that's, I would go that, 21. Centennial Grove improvements, if the grant does not get awarded. So we will know prior to fall town meeting whether we get the $500,000 that is intended to put in the restroom facility and other improvements. But even if we do get that money, I heard today from Mark Renzi of the Finance Committee, who's working with Dan Mayer, we're probably looking at a need of another $50,000 for the pavilion project itself. Right now, the town has $150,000 laid out for what our architect told us was a $500,000 build. This would make it go to around $200,000, but still, with the volunteer and the donations, a lot cheaper than if we had to pay for the whole thing. So are you okay with around 50? He doesn't, we don't have the exact figure yet at this point in the warrant for the pavilion.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, it's not complete, right?
You're gonna get a frame, and you're gonna get roof sheathing, but you need the shingles and you need some other things.
So we also still have the Recreation Camp Improvement Stabilization Fund with $115,000. Do you think that that would apply?
We could take it from there.
Take it from there?
Yeah.
Just, it's easier swallowing, spending money, when you know that you have money set aside for just that specific thing.
Yeah, can take it from there. Okay, then I would, after that, I would go with, this is where we'd add in the in-depth demographic survey for the seniors, that's 35,000. And the next article that will be renumbered, but it reads 21 right now, would be whether we want to continue putting money into the various special purpose funds, and that's why you have $115,000 in the fund. You just mentioned, Ruth, because we've been doing that on a regular basis, and that's a standard article.
For the fall.
In the fall, we do it, because that's when our free cash has been certified. Article...
And I know, on the stabilization, just to comment, and I know that we'll have recommendations from the Finance Committee before us, before, you know, at some point, but Jeff mentioned not funding these stabilization accounts, and I'm a big believer in saving, and I'm a little concerned when we talk about not, because the reason we do have 115 in this random account, that might come in handy.
We've been doing 20,000 a little bit at a time.
Right, so I'm not necessarily, I don't know that we have to do 20 in all 12 accounts or whatever we usually do, but I mean, I'd like to see at least five or whatever. Again, we'll have a recommendation before us, but I just caution us on not funding things.
Yeah. Then the next two articles have to do with the two enterprise funds and whether they need to use any of their dedicated free cash to make any amendments to the budget. 24 would be more money for the grinder pump replacement. Again, though, that comes right out of wastewater-free cash. 25, if there's a need to replenish the Finance Committee's reserve fund. I don't think there will be, because there really haven't been too many big hits on it since July. Article 25, sorry, said that. 26 will be whether more money should be put away in the other post-employment benefits trust fund, that's retiree health insurance. 27 will be a general article for housekeeping within the budget. So the article looks like that, but the motion will have all these other things that I've listed in there, and I'm adding to that if there's a need for more money for the Council on Aging Volunteer and Activities Coordinator. And then my question to you is, where do you want the change to the wage and salary scale to go? Before Article 27 or after? I think if you did it before, then you would, and it didn't go, then you wouldn't read that part of the motion.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So put wage and salary before. And right now, that's the only change to the wage and salary scale that I have been told about. Article 28, then, is if we're gonna add money to the town's stabilization fund, I doubt we are, because we're already at the right place, and there are a couple, I think, of unpaid bills, minor amounts of money. And, you know, the town council will have his first pass at this draft document in time for your next meeting, and I'll make the changes that you discussed tonight. So you'll see it again. Do you want to consider having the warrant signed on October 2nd? We can go as late as the second meeting in October. This year, we were thinking about it, trying to do it earlier, because it would allow the warrant to be established, and then the planning board could be doing its hearings based on stuff that's actually in the warrant. Now, if the planning board finds that they need to slow down, then you might have to use that second opportunity, which I think is October 23rd. Is that right?
It is October 23rd.
Yeah.
So it's the second, and then not until the 23rd?
Because Columbus Day.
Right. And so you could do, that's kind of an early warrant, but it's with the zoning in mind this year, and I think we need to talk more with the chairman of the planning board on that.
Well, I think she's also at the mercy of MAPC, and until they got, is her name Jawan? And is the nice young girl Jawan, is that her name?
I don't know how to print, yeah.
Until we got Courtney's partner, his counterpart with MAPC, we were at a standstill. And now that she seems to be taking the reins a little bit, we're beginning to move. We just had a check-in on Thursday, and it went pretty well. She seems to be working on quite a few things, but I'm sure the planning board would appreciate more time. That gives them, you know, three more weeks. I just caution us about giving them a date so close to that, because I also don't want things coming in last minute. We need council to have plenty of time for review.
That was a concern of mine, too. So I guess we need to get to the next joint meeting to see, and then you need to make a decision.
Let's do that. Let's decide on September 25th, and let's see what kind of progress we have at Planning Board.
Okay, and then finally, I did get a call from an attorney that's representing an abutter to the senior center. The board may recall...
How many years has this been going on?
Oh, this, yeah, there was a previous owner that was looking at it, and then they never produced a survey at all.
Yeah.
So this owner produced this survey, which is right here, but we had on file a survey plan that had different numbers on it.
Right.
So we said, well, you know, the board of selectmen doesn't really want to accept this if there's some other information out there that could be accurate. At the time, this surveyor said, no, I did all this research, and I went back and looked at deeds, et cetera, and I looked at it and said, yeah, but all of your spikes are set spikes, they're not found spikes. There's only like, let's see, there's one iron pipe found, the rest of it was...
Stuff he put in.
Was a stakeout.
Yeah.
And so I'm looking at it and saying, well, you may have researched deeds, but you didn't find any property boundaries except for one corner. So then a bunch of time went by, and the board asked me to reach out to the owner and ask the owner whether I could get some of the deed references, so we could continue to do due diligence on our side. We never heard back. Instead, we heard from the attorney. Uh, we talked to the owner in May, and it was July 25th, I guess, when some other plan, which we don't have yet, was developed. What does that tell you? It tells me that this plan wasn't good enough, and that the owner had to get the attorney involved to determine whether this plan was good enough, and in fact, they hired this firm again to do a new plan, which they're calling an instrument survey, right, which is way different than a basic stakeout. I was told wherever it was, more than a week ago, that she was sending the new plan over, but I still don't have the plan. I was hoping to have the plan for tonight, tonight, so you could look at it more, but suffice it to say, I think the board would agree that without that other plan, which they took the time and money to generate, this thing's gonna sit, right?
Right.
They wouldn't be doing another plan if that was
Right, if it was good.
The good, the, the one they wanted to fight with.
Exactly.
The Senior Center is doing some improvements, some X area improvements for sitting areas, it doesn't impact the spot that's in dispute, correct?
No, because right now, it's half of our, of a, one of our handicap parking spots, they're not looking at putting pavers there, I think it's behind the building.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're not improving an area that's in dispute, and then we're gonna be ripping it out.
I'll verify, but I don't think so. And that's the report.
Yeah, it's like three feet, right, that's what we're talking about.
Three, four feet, yeah. But it's important, right, because then-
For us, yeah.
Yeah.
Parking space.
I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the selectments August 21st, 2023, open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to consider a request for the Canomo Point parking passes for film production company for six vehicles between now and February of 2024, possibly with a fee.
So that, that needs requiring, uh, needs discussion. So I had a, a contact, and I think everybody has, has that in your packages um, for filming at Canomo Point, and they're asking for six passes, and I would ima- fortunately, this is all gonna be basically off-season work. I think you need to determine whether you want to allow this, and if so, how much do you want per pass per week? Cause we're looking at around six months.
I don't have a problem with what you recommended.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, it seems fair enough.
Yeah, and that was just an example, but-
Off-season.
Right.
You know, I mean.
I think my suggestion was what, twenty? Per pass per week?
It was twenty per car per week.
Cause we're talking about twen- like twenty-six weeks. Times six, times twenty, comes, comes to-
Twenty-eight, eighty.
So do you wanna ask them for, uh,
Three thousand bucks.
Three thousand, thirty-five hundred, what do you wanna ask them for?
Yeah.
Three thousand dollars, make it an even number, what do you think, Alva?
Um, I'm just more concerned, no, 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 I think, you know, it's off-season. Um, just making sure that they would have to come back to us if it was delayed.
Oh, absolutely, I think that you just have an end date on it, that the pass that we print that hangs on their mirror or whatever has-
I'd say end February.
Do we want, uh, do we wanna specify where they park?
That's what I was gonna ask, I think you need to put them up in the
The secondary lot?
The Canomo Lane Lot, not the one up front.
Yeah.
And if they don't want those terms, then, okay, don't, don't film.
Sure.
Three thousand bucks for Canomo Lane through the end of February, okay?
Per car?
Okay.
Is that per car, or total?
Total, for the six months.
The total.
Yeah, okay.
We, we can get to eighteen thousand if you want me to, but I don't know if they'll film the movie.
Do you like the number three thousand dollars?
No, that's good.
That's fine. Let's also remember that the person shooting it is a resident and does pay taxes.
Yeah.
Um.
Which show is it?
Do you, Farmhouse Fixer Upper?
Yeah, that's, um-
The guy that owns Southern Night.
Yeah, right, night, yeah.
Do you wanna motion on that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the request for the six vehicles parked at Canomo Point for the film production of Farmhouse Fixer Upper between now and February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-nine this coming year, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Limited to Canomo Lane.
Limited to Canomo Lane.
What is the, what is the property? Where is the property?
He didn't give us the address.
Farmhouse? Where's the farm?
It will be on TV.
So it's an owned property, and on, the property is owned or is on leased property?
I think it's on leased.
Really, okay.
Do they have building permits? Did we see them? Did we approve them?
No.
No, no, and no, so
They haven't done anything.
When we send an email back to him, do we wanna make sure he realizes that we require permits in Essex?
Yeah. Find out where it is.
Yeah, I'll find it out.
Okay. Um, next is continued review of the draft mobile vendor policy, the Economic Development Committee meets this week. Ooh, I think, hang on.
Uh, what date do we come up with there? Not this week.
It's next week? It's next Monday, the eighteenth, at seven PM, so I think we should table the mobile policy until the 25th.
Okay.
Okay, reconsider the sale of Lot 44 on Gregory Island. Brendan?
So after the board looked at this at the last meeting, I talked with Town Council, and the gentleman that wants to purchase Lot 44 was willing to purchase it with the same restrictions as the other ones that are going to go forward. Town Council said that we do not owe that person a chance to sign a purchase and sale agreement, but um, we weren't prohibited from doing that either, because they're willing to do the same restrictions. It's also not a conflict for the person, the, the, there were two bidders on that, and a high bidder dropped out because they couldn't live with the restrictions. And since the second person can, it's not prejudicial against the first person. So my recommendation there is to reconsider the board's vote on Lot 44 and include that in the lots, uh, to be sold.
So moved.
All those in favor, I, I agree, I think that, yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then with respect to the release deeds, they are not ready yet, um, but I would recommend that the board vote to authorize the signature of those outside of a meeting. Um, and it would be contingent on receiving final approval from Town Council, cause remember, she's doing legal work right now, making sure that the chain of title for each one of these things passes the, her legal test. So anything, you'd be voting to sign on four lots, but only if and when Town Council says all four of them or less than that are ready for you to do so.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to sign the re- release deeds associated with the sale of town-owned lots 26, 29, 41, and po- and 44.
Takeout possibly.
Possibly. Um, on Gregory Island, either at a meeting or outside of a meeting, if necessary, contingent on receiving final approval from Count, Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the other parcels at Gregory Island.
So this says five to six town-owned parcels, well now, knowing that there were nine, and four have now been included in the sale that's happening soon, we're down to, um, five, not six. And the question is, do you have minimum pricing and whether you're gonna have any restrictions on those remaining five parcels? Um, there, there was discussion at a previous board meeting that if you were gonna go back out, you're just gonna go out with no restrictions at all, and you could set, uh, the minimum prices. And remember, in the first procurement, the minimum bid on any of the lots was five thousand dollars. But you could set any minimum you want.
So that's what we wanna do, isn't it?
So the question is, do we wanna sell the lots without restrictions, do we wanna indicate some sort of restrictions? And then obviously, we have to talk about what we wanna set the numbers at, I mean, the minimums are clearly what the what
Came in.
What somebody was willing to pay.
What someone's willing to pay is what the value is.
W- without restrictions.
Without restrictions.
That particular person.
Yeah.
And do we need to do it now, or can, can it be then at a later date?
You already canceled those procurements, so this is just resumption, and it could be done over the winter, you could do it anytime you want, if you need more time to think about it.
I just feel like we should think about it, um.
Think about the direction.
Yeah.
So do you wanna bring it back at the next meeting, do you wanna bring it back after Fall Town meeting, do you wanna bring it back?
I think after Fall.
After Fall?
It's my-
Pay for some Fall Town meeting expenses?
Well, not that we would make it happen this quickly, but I was hoping to pay for the turf fields.
All right, I'll make sure that I bring it back at, at the meeting after.
We're not gonna guarantee we're gonna get those high numbers again, November 27th.
No, definitely not.
If you set that as your minimum.
They may not sell.
They may, right, so at least three of those, if we set those minimums, I think that you're gonna get those, the other two could be open for discussion.
It, I mean, it, I, I don't know. I just think it's gonna cause more fights and lawyers, and it's ends up gonna end up costing us more money and then
We'll lose money on the sale.
I don't, I don't think so, if you now look at the map, if you take the map that we're talking about, get rid of all the notes that we have all over it, print a clean copy and highlight the five parcels that we're talking about, and look at who the direct abutters are of those now only five parcels and not twelve, I think you'd be pleasantly surprised to know that the people that were concerned about the impact are no longer as impacted, because the person that wants to buy them is only a direct abutter to himself, and now that those other ones have been taken care of, I don't think it's as contentious as it would be. So, I mean, I haven't printed myself a clean copy to look at it, but I will, and I mean, I'll go walk it again and see how it looks. Next is to discuss granting additional access to Town Council for the Conservation Commission to continue to refine the draft conservation bylaw that may be considered at annual town meeting, May of 2024. So to speak to this a little bit, I had one of the, um, co-chairs reach out to me. At our last meeting, we had an agenda item that talked about whether or not we were gonna bring this to Fall Town meeting, and we said, this is a major, it brought out a lot of people at annual town meeting, a lot of people were there, maybe in support of, but I think more in opposition of, and they were concerned that bringing it to Fall is like Brendan said, you know, we have residents that think that that's kinda sneaking things through. So annual is the best place for major bylaw changes like that. And, um, the second piece of that, we figured, well, it's not coming back till annual, so they don't really need to talk to council until then. But one of the co-chairs reached out to me and said, well, we'd really like access to council now, so we can have them get, do a review of it and give us feedback now, so if there's anything that we need to change, it gives us an opportunity to make those changes between now and May. So that was, that was the request, I obviously sent it off to Brendan, it's on the agenda, and then this evening, we received an email that expresses concerns about access to legal dollars, as well as one of the comments that I read in here that does resonate with me, is that it should include specific projects. And kind of limits to what they're asking for, not just an overall look at it, or-
Look at everything and see what we wanna, see what sticks.
Right, it's more about what is your specific question, so, I mean, the, this, the, you know, this email's
Yeah, I think it's, I agree, I think it makes sense, that there needs to be some sort of control over what it's actually used for.
So the, the statement that the Conservation Commission would be required to define the necessity of this expanded authority, um, I think he wants specifically what is, what is the question, what's the ask of council, so that it's not just unlimited dollars in communications back and forth?
Yeah.
Do we have thoughts on?
Yeah, I agree, I think that makes sense.
So would you, would you like the commission to formulate their list of specific questions, so you can consider it at your next meeting?
Sure. So we received a request from Personnel Board from the Library Board of Trustees to carry over fiscal year 2023 vacation hours over into fiscal year 24, we received an email outlining I think it was seventy to carry seventy-seven hours of vacation time from fiscal 23 to fiscal-
Over and above the thirty-five that's allowed without asking permission, so it's, it's actually seventy-seven plus thirty-five, which is a hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve.
No, to carry that over too, they're allowed to carry thirty-five over.
Right, if, if the person did nothing to seek additional, um, approval, then the person could carry thirty-five. The person has seventy-seven additional beyond that. So it would be not just carrying over seventy-seven, it's seventy-seven beyond what is allowed without asking.
So why is there so much vacation time, is it like, super busy, or?
Well, she's retiring, and I don't know why she didn't use the vacation time, but she's trying to not lose the benefit of it now, knowing that she's winding down, I think, in October.
Right.
My question to Brendan via private email was more, why are we only hearing about this, because you're only allowed to carry over thirty-five, so we shouldn't even be seeing that there's seventy-seven being carried over, but the point is that she's retiring, she's dedicated
Twenty years or something, yeah.
You know, to the community, I don't see any reason why we would ever not let her take her vacation time, but I think that the Board of Trustees needs to understand that there is a process for requesting carryover time, and not just, it doesn't just happen internally, it happens through a process.
No, I agree, I think, yeah, I forgot that she was retiring.
So I will entertain a motion to allow the Board of Trustees to roll the additional vacation hours over for the retiring librarian.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two reminders that the Manchester Essex Rotary will be meeting on Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, six-thirty to eight-thirty PM here in the third floor auditorium of Town Hall. Peter, I know you're away and can't make it, Alva, I think you are gonna try to make it with me, and I was gonna present just kind of current events in Essex. And then the next regular Board of Selectments meeting will take place on Monday, September 25th, 2023, at six PM, third floor auditorium, 30 Martin Street. Um, Brendan, we do have one more thing in our packet that we didn't touch on, and I just don't know if Peter was gonna attend with you, so, and then I actually had a couple of comments. But, go ahead.
Tomorrow, or the next one, whatever it is.
Uh, the thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Reg thing, yeah.
At two o'clock.
Yeah.
Uh, here in Town Hall.
Yeah.
So you can make it, that's great.
I will, yeah, I, I should've seen you, I sent you, but I notified you.
Yeah, you told me you, you were gonna come.
So my only, I know that it's not on the agenda, but since you are going to a meeting and I won't be able to attend, I have two things that I wanna make sure are really talked about there, like kind of agenda items, cause I don't know if they set an agenda. But one of the big, so one of the big dredging companies out of Salem has basically said, we didn't bother to bid on this project, because this project was a death sentence based on the date that they wanted to dredge. Trying to dredge so late in the year becomes very, um, dangerous in the mouth of the river, so they, for us to solicit more people that are interested in this project, they are recommending that we look at the, starting the dredge project in August.
They, they don't allow that. They, they don't allow that.
The problem is, it's, it's a biological thing. You'll, you'll interrupt biological processes.
Yeah.
So what's the earliest they can do it, Peter?
I think October, later, or maybe even November.
I think that this company, they might be saying that, but they should know that most dredging doesn't happen during a production season.
During the winter.
Interesting. So they said, with, prefer August.
Stuff, you know.
Okay.
We'll, we'll ask at the, at the meeting.
So ask how early they can do it.
But I think we're going to get, well, there's a window, and it's, it's set through the EPA and the DEP and.
Yeah.
Just the months that they want to do it are the most dangerous months on the water.
Yeah, I mean, that's when, that's when dredging occurs.
Yeah.
Okay.
They just dredged the Merrimack last year, when in, you know, I think it was.
And didn't they lose a barge or something, and it hit the bridge?
They didn't finish it.
No, they got rid of the contractor, because they were a bad contractor, and they brought in somebody else for twice the cost.
In 94, you had, the barge was iced in, literally up against the wall, and they couldn't move it. So they're just worried about ice and those things. The second piece, so the first one is how early can we start? That would be a big thing. And the second thing is money. So we know that we got federal grant for 4.4 million. We originally heard the number come in at 2.7, and we thought, and we thought, oh my God, this is going to be covered and then summer.
Because Congress, Congress funded, at least at the time of the appropriation, an amount of money for a much higher number of yards of removal than what the actual design ended up specifying. So we said, we're going to be okay, because even though it's at, you know, some past dollar value, you know, some past year, we're, we're dredging so much less that they should make it up, and nope, it didn't work. And you only had the one bidder. So there wasn't any competition.
No, I know that, but I just think about.
Yeah, I think they're all so busy that nobody's bidding on it.
Well, this particular bidder didn't even bother to come and do a site visit. They gave us a bid based on looking at GIS maps and Google Earth and other things. So it was, let me throw the highest number at the project and see if we can get it. The second, so the second thing is money. And I think that we need to, you know, it's a year away, and the cost of everything goes up in one year. So if we're not seriously planning on another $500,000, like 4.9 or 500,000.
Yeah.
This isn't going to happen. So we need to be realistic in what we're looking for, for this. So, and I don't know whether, again, if we're talking to, you're meeting with Senator Char, so he's the person to ask.
There's usually somebody there from Congressman Moulton's office.
Okay, perfect.
It could be, though, that contracts run out, they end, you know, they may be all booked up for this year, and next year they aren't, so it could, the bids could come in lower, you know? I mean, or they could be booked out for the next 10 years, and the bids could be much higher, who knows, you know? But yeah, I mean, definitely need, the difference now, at least, have it in the wings, right?
Yeah, so those are my two agenda items. It's just, we need more money, and would like an earliest start date, if at all possible. Tina, you're the only one that has stuck it out till the very end. Do you have any public comment? And I know that we're having difficulty, so if you do, go to the chat.
Have her try to speak, Tina, because I did make one change. Go ahead and see if you can.
Nope.
No.
We can see the green dots talking, but we can't hear you. Do you want to go to the chat? Or you can text me if you have public comment?
Call. She call?
She could call me if she does.
So it is Wednesday at 2:00, correct?
I'm just really sad that it's not happening. And I'm not even voting.
Well, it's very discouraging that it's not happening, but, and this, this is for the marinas, or the general?
So, no, this actually is going to benefit the marinas, because they have.
Marinas are now going to maybe get in on it.
But this, yeah, right, but this meeting is on the general dredge or the?
It's the marinas more than anything else. It's, it's to try to say, okay, now that we have this breather, how do we make it so that the marinas finish their permitting in time?
Yeah.